Okay, Ashley, can I have roll call, please?
Clatt.
Here.
Menard.
Here.
Jertie.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Briggs.
Here.
Cavalier.
Here.
Cressel.
Here.
Okay, it's time for the open forum. If anyone would like to address consign any issue not already on tonight's agenda, may come to the podium, state your first last name and address, please. Okay, hearing none from the chambers. Chad, anybody on the phone bridge, please?
No, Your Honor, I'll close the bridge.
Agent logged in.
Oops, excuse me.
Agent logged off.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, no presentations. This brings us to the agenda. Does anyone wish to add or remove anything from tonight's agenda?
Your Honor, under the regular agenda, add item 8.04, a resolution regarding appointing Morgan Hypna as the vacant at-large council member seat.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's?
Throw move, Your Honor.
Who do I got over here? All four?
It's so important to you.
Yeah, so we have Don, Cavalier, and then Tim?
No, one of them, I don't know. That's only one that was quiet.
You got us figured out?
Yes, we have a council member Cavalier, and then seconded by council member Menard.
Okay, I guess no discussion. Can I have roll call, please?
Clatt.
Aye.
Menard.
Aye.
Jertie.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. This brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve tonight's?
Throw move.
Gave by Joe. Thank you.
I'll second it.
And Clayton, thank you. Roll call, please.
Clatt.
Aye.
Menard.
Aye.
Jertie.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
Okay, no public hearings. Regular agenda, Ashley, please.
Yes, Your Honor, item 8.01 is a resolution regarding the Irishman Shanty's dispensing of intoxicating liquor on premises at the community event.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Throw move, Your Honor.
Thank you, Don, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Henry, discussion. Corky.
Yes, if you remember, there's tunes on Tuesday each month during the summer. Tunes on Tuesday has requested the ability of the shanty to serve intoxicating liquors, and because they are a caterer, they can do that. And we've checked with the law enforcement, with Darren. They've got the perimeter set up, and they're okay with this particular matter. So on Tuesday, July 18th, if this is approved, the Irishman Shanty will be in the old Wayne Hotel parking lot, serving liquor.
Thank you, Corky, further discussion? Hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Clatt.
Aye.
Menard.
Aye.
Jertie.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item 8.02 is a resolution regarding the purchase of a new street sweeper for the Crookston Public Works Department.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this? Tim?
Second.
Seconded by Joe, discussion. Corky, please.
Yes, the street sweeper is on its last legs. That's 7,000 to 8,000 hours of operation. It's been repaired at least once this year. And Public Works Director Brandon Carlson has requested the purchase of a new one. We do have the funding. It would come out of a designated fund. But because it's $270,000, we're asking that you give your approval for that, switching from one purchase to this particular purchase.
How much have we stuck into it since spring, since the winter?
Stuck into it?
The new engine that was put in this spring was 24,000. And then there was some main bearings that went out the other day that can't replace. I don't know the cost on that yet, but...
So, and we would keep this one?
Until it died.
Until it...
So, the thing that I am, I mean, I don't want to be Monday morning quarterbacking, but I mean, we come out of the winter not using it. The hours didn't change much over the winter. Should we have been a little more proactive, maybe, in trying? I mean, we just were out about, what, 30, $35,000 with the bearings and stuff now? And, I mean, maybe we should have thought about doing that before, or...
I mean, you, if you look at the cost of a new one, it's 300,000, too.
Right.
So, I mean, you can, there's always, it's hard for one street sweeper to get all the way through town unless you run 24 hours a day, which we don't have staff.
Oh, so this is going to be in addition to what?
We're, we're going to keep running this one.
We're keeping this one, yeah, okay.
I mean, it's, it's coming to its end of life, and it doesn't have a lot of value, but we're going to keep running it until, we're going to run two street sweepers now until that one grenades on us. So, it's not like we just threw 30 grand on a whole either, so...
Yeah, I want you to support this because of the fact that I have had five requests for getting the streets done and down and moored for, getting ready, getting rid of those seedlings down there. And they said they really smell bad and all that kind of stuff. They haven't been, they haven't been worked on, so I think it's important that we get a new sweeper.
So we'll have two?
Yeah, two sweepers.
When did we purchase this one we have now, you know?
I believe it's a 2012, I believe.
It doesn't seem that long ago.
Yeah, it doesn't, does it?
How many hours of summer typically on one that we have?
I, I'll have to dig into it a little bit more.
Well, it could, I mean, the benefit to have two would be great until it's one bites the dusty and all, but...
And again, I know I always ask this, but leasing is not an option. Never, we never, we never entertain that ever in the city, and I...
Well, I don't, not ever, but in this particular instance?
All, all the leases that I've looked at is, you know, it does add, I looked at the grader that we purchased. If we would have leased it, it would have added about 80,000 to the, to the grader's overall purchase price. So, you know, it, it all depends on what the machine ends up. If you get a lemon that has a lot of maintenance, yes, it probably would have paid for the 80,000 dollar lease, but I guess, I, I looked into it on the grader and one other piece of equipment, and it, it adds a substantial cost.
I know, I talked to a few people at the state, and I know we talk about this every year when we buy big equipment and different stuff for the, for the city. But I, I mean, I know the state, they lease, they lease a lot of equipment, you know, for different things, graders and different stuff like that. I did, I did some checking on my own, and I'm like, you know, does that, do you think at the end that saves you money overall? And they seem to think it does, you know, but...
I guess my question to that would be, like, is that because their contracts are so large that the significant cost per machine isn't as expensive as someone who's renting one?
I think as a city entity, I think we can get on the same type of lease agreements that the state can.
Then you, you run into our, hours, too, and after so many hours, it costs you absorbent of our money. So, I mean, it all depends on how much you're going to use it, how many hours they give you.
I know, we've always done it that way.
And I mean, it's just always safer to own it versus...
So, I mean, no, no, I mean, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we can, by leasing, it's always been, in my opinion, we can drive nice equipment and, and try to forego a lot of the expense on, on maintenance that comes up after a while. And then after a while, we turn them in and get new stuff again on leasing. So, I mean, everybody's wrong in the state except Crookston. Everybody else is leasing, except us. So, I mean, I, I just think...
Is everybody in the state leasing?
We should consider sometimes, and looking at some leases.
I would like to see the cost analysis of both of those.
At least the cost analysis, like you're saying, okay, bring something to the table.
Is it comparable communities, like our size, that are doing it? I feel like bigger communities could definitely do it, but smaller communities are going to struggle with leases.
And I think that's a point well taken, and, and we will attempt, when we can, to bring it in front of you to say, we've looked at the lease, we've looked at a purchase, here's how they look.
Okay.
Good. So we'll just, if we look at buying or leasing, we'll just look at the pros and cons of both ways, I guess.
And we can do that within our departments. And say, this is what we've done, here they are, here's a recommendation. Fair?
Fair.
Beautiful. Further discussion? Hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Clatt.
Aye.
Menard.
Aye.
Jertie.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item 8.03 is a resolution regarding accepting the bid and awarding the 2023 Street and Utility Improvement Contract.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion to approve this resolution.
Throw move, Your Honor.
Thank you. Don, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Henry, discussion. Corky, please.
What this is, is if you recall, we rebid the entire six-unit project. We rebid the Alexander, and then the Houston installation of the water portion of that. We received one bid, and you have it in front of you. It is slightly lower on the Alexander by approximately 8 to $10,000. It is slightly higher on the water, but overall, this is a bid that's within the parameters. And looking at, let's be frank, looking at Alexander Street, they need to have that street fixed. They've gone over a year with a reason. The repairs have now settled, and, but it still has gravel, and if you've driven up there, it's, it's not in the best shape. We talked about it with Rich, Lawson, and Brandon, and myself. And given the bids, and given the situation, we are, each and all of us recommending we do this.
So, just a question, what do you think the reason we're not getting more business? Because we just, everybody's having a hard time finding workers. Is it that, or is it...
It's a combination of things. It appears that, one, concrete is the single biggest driving force, just not able to get concrete bids. And I don't mean concrete in the sense of what the numbers are, but for concrete, and they're higher, considerably higher, driving the cost.
So contractors have a limited supply of concrete, so they can't take on the job, so therefore they're not...
That's one component. The second is the workers, just getting them. And we, we typically have just a handful, three or four bidders, and they're, they're full.
Right.
In fact, we're using one both on the AIC road, Central Park, they're staying here. So that's, is that a fair, Rich?
Fair.
Brandon, fair? Okay.
Well, it kind of nixed it, too, you know, the previous bids, so we had to rebid just two projects, so I'm surprised we even got one, too.
Well, I mean, we said this four months ago, and we went, whoa, if we have to go rebid it, it's going to be tougher. Like, we're going to get less bids.
But this is a reasonable...
Right.
Bid. It wasn't exceedingly high, like the past one was approximately 40% above what our estimates were, and Alexander needs to be taken care of.
Yep, it does.
Further discussion? Hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Clatt.
Aye.
Menard.
Aye.
Jertie.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item 8.04 is a resolution regarding appointing Morgan Hypna as the vacant at-large council member seat.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Throw move.
I'll make that motion.
Got Tim and Christie.
Christie.
Discussion. See, Morgan is here, welcome.
Yeah, welcome, Morgan.
Better wait till she's approved.
I almost slammed her.
I, I would like to mention that I appreciate everybody who applied for the position. I think we had some really great candidates, and I hope that those who weren't chosen also find other opportunities to kind of give back to the city. And I know we have some open positions in various committees, and I hope that they try pursuing those in the meantime. But I appreciate everybody that applied, and welcome, Morgan.
Yeah, I'd like to second that.
And I did contact each of the applicants, spoke with Morgan directly. I did attempt to contact Josh Knack. He wasn't available, but I did leave a message because I wanted him to hear it from us before it hit the media. And I did speak with Matt, and indicated the choice, and encouraged him as well to select some of his areas of interest and apply for either membership or liaison, or however that would be.
Yeah, for the community members that are listening and that are present, you should know that the candidates really were exceptional in all the ways. We wouldn't have been remiss in having the opportunity to choose each one of them. So it was a, a really positive experience all around. And as Christie mentioned, encouraging those individuals to continue to step forward, to offer their talents in service to our community.
All right, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Clatt.
Aye.
Menard.
Aye.
Jertie.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Congratulations.
All right, reports. Corky, please.
It's always a busy two weeks. I've been engaged with the paid-on call firefighters in contract negotiations. I'm hopeful that we're moving in the right direction. I've had a number of phone calls with SEH, in particular Brian Bergstrom, regarding Washington School and the pool. The pool analysis by the structural engineer is complete, and we're waiting for the report. He will be engaging in an examination of Washington School and have to us honor before July 21st the final written report. Audrey and I have had a number of meetings with Eller's Investments regarding our investments, and I believe we, you all made a very good choice in lining up with them, and we're constantly reviewing those. We've talked with Reed Huntin regarding the park, and the trail, and the bathhouse, and I think we can continue pursuing, trying to get that bathhouse constructed. We'll just see how it goes. Also, Chad and Audrey and I have talked about the phone system and it being implemented now. And we've also had, I believe, two discussions regarding software and potential inclusion in next year's budget for automated timekeeping. We've also met regarding the at-large interviews, and we set that process up, and I think you are, to be commended, it went really well, and we got it done quickly and effectively, and welcome, Morgan. That's all I have from myself. I do have a report from Shane, who's not able to be here. They're installing some equipment, and he just wanted to report that we have, in fact, hired a new firefighter. His name is Aiden Lebel from Mankato. He comes to Crookston with firefighting experience, and he's worked for the Mankato Fire Department for almost two years. So now we are having a full complement of full-time firefighters.
Wonderful. Does that mean that both fire and police are now officially full?
Each of the departments are fully staffed in August, when, when Adam starts, but, or Aiden, excuse me. But yes, fully staffed, and that's been a long process.
Sure has.
But we're, we're done for now.
Wonderful.
All right, thank you, Corky. Darren, please, anything?
All right, thank you. Chad's coming up. So I know we've been mentioning to you guys that we were going to do a presentation, Chad and I both, on some of the garage and building upgrades that we did at the police department, to include the new server room and, and IT servers. So I was going to just briefly speak, and mainly pictures that I have for you tonight on the building upgrades at the police department, and then Chad is going to discuss the, the server upgrades and everything that we've done to the city. So just kind of, as, as a whole, at the police department, it was a two-part project. When I say that, we had the garage upgrades, if you remember, and this is dating back to, like, even the '21 budget going into '22. If you remember, we were approved on the unrestricted funds, some of those ARPA funds, and I know I'm not supposed to say that word, but I don't, I don't know how else to designate those, the unrestricted ARPA funds, that was allocated for different projects throughout the city, one being the garage upgrade. And then the second part was a capital improvement project that, again, came out of the 2022 budget. So, we started this project in 2022, and we completed it in late May of this year. So, for all the reasons you were saying earlier, trying to get contractors, getting materials, everything in between, that was kind of like a year and a half-long process in the works for us to get going. I don't know what button push your guy. Thought we had it here, of course.
The system's really good.
Yeah, it, it is. It's all, Chad made a good comment today, you know, with the power going down last night, and, and us losing power at the police department. He said IT is, the service is like air. It's only good until you realize you don't need it, or, or you need it, sorry, yeah. He said it better. I'm sorry. Anyway, so, again, just kind of a real breakdown. These are the only two slides I have, and then the rest are photos. So the two-part upgrade, if you know, the one part was the garage upgrade. That's where we had the secure armory and server room. We replaced the entry doors, upgraded the HVAC system. This was all in the garage. Installed air exchanger, some fans, installed tin on the wall and ceiling covers, coverings, upgraded the garage door rail system, which I'll show you in photos, upgraded electrical, added some lights, replaced some windows, and we relocated a sink. That was a year and a half in the works in the garage. And then the capital improvement projects that we did is we installed controlled door access system to eight doors in the police department. Part of that system, or what was included in that, is replacing the door handles, electronic strike plates, and then remote openers for the key fob systems. And then also, we added some remote openers in our dispatch or front office area where our secretaries can push a button and unlock the main door that comes from the lobby into the office area. Then we also installed 11 security cameras, eight on the exterior of the building, one inside the garage, one inside the lobby, one in the evidence room, and then we replaced the handicap door openers in the lobby. So, kind of a lot in a year and a half there. Go ahead, Chad. Chad? Yep. Yep. Maybe we're not going to get anywhere. So, this is just an overview of the police garage, standing outside, just so everybody knows, this is the main area of, of where we did the work in the garage. Next photo, Chad? So here's a few photos of, of before the upgrades. As you can see, these are split screen also, so just kind of, they, some of them are a little better, the, the difference, but they are split screens on the left side. This is a picture of the northeast, northeast corner of the garage. You can see there's no tin coverings. They had some foam for the exterior walls. The old windows were glass block with some old windows. They were very inefficient. You couldn't open them, and they had just kind of cut some holes in, in the foam. Clayton probably remembers this, to be honest with you, from back when, when Clayton was still there. And you can see there's no painting, and then we just kind of ended up using this for storage. So, you kind of see just a little bit before and after. This is on the right side. It's another corner of the garage, where we have a wash area, hoses and different things that we had been using for cleaning squad cars. Okay? So here's another before, just as we're kind of cleaning things up and getting things ready for contractors. Again, this is looking to the north on the left half of the screen. Again, you can kind of see the overview. The floor had been done prior to this garage upgrade, had been done quite a few years prior, but we did have to put another covering on it just for water issues, which I'll show you later. We had to do that this year also. But again, you kind of see, there's no ceiling coverings. They kind of have that open cell foam in the rafters that would fall down. It looks kind of white in these photos, but actually, it's really dark and kind of dingy if you do look at it. And again, on the right side, this is just another photo of the north wall, just giving you a picture of what kind of the wall coverings looked like prior to the garage upgrade. Okay?
Darren, is it like a spray foam on the top?
Yeah, the ceiling, you know, they have like open and closed cell, like, if I'm saying this right, like the closed cells are really hard, you know, and like the open is kind of, it's like insulation that would actually kind of fall.
Popcorn ceiling.
Yeah, 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 right. Okay? So here is kind of a cool picture that I took. So we had to do this in two stages, right? You kind of see that there's a structure beam, a I-beam running on the center of the garage that separates both halves. So we did one side, right, and, and completely gutted everything, redid that, then moved over to the other side so we could still access the garage, at least on a couple bays, while we're going through the process. So you kind of see on the, on the one side where the tin and everything's being installed, and I have some arrows here pointing at the garage door openers. One oversight, again, different contractors that bid the job, and it ended up, I had to hire someone else that originally didn't bid the job, like the fourth or fifth contractor through the process. But one oversight was, you can see that the garage door openers and the rail system are fastened tight to the ceiling. Well, as we put fairing strips in there and lowered the tin, we gained about three and a half inches of roof space, if you want to call that. So we actually had to redo the upper vertical, I'm sorry, horizontal rail system and reattach all those garage doors. So, in the end, it turned out real good, but again, kind of those things that evolved as you're doing some upgrades. Go ahead, Chad? So here is now kind of an after picture of it, and I have a few more that even look a little better. But you can see, the tin is done on the ceiling, all the garage doors are in new lights. We, we repurposed all of the lights. They were LED lights that were in there. We did add one bank on the backside, or the west side of the garage. You can see, removed all the block, the glass block, opened up those whole wall coverings, completely installed new high-efficiency windows. There are sliders. We did obscured glass, so you can't see in or out. And you can see the new doors. I'll show some close-ups, and we painted the walls, and, and just you can kind of see how everything really came together there. Here's a picture, just looking back at the garage doors. Again, you can see the rail system, we had to put in what's called a low overhead rail system, so the doors kind of come up and come back down, just the way that it worked. And we literally had millimeters of room to work with. So fortunately, it worked out. Repurposed the, the vertical rail system. We had to put in new horizontal rail systems, and then we painted that back wall in between the garage doors. Garage doors stayed. Those were original. Again, here's just another picture looking at that north wall. You kind of see all the new windows, wall coverings, and just how clean and nice that looks. Here's this picture of the south wall, again, just showing the tin we, so it was just the north and south wall and ceiling that we put tin, and we painted everything else. Next picture? So this sink was originally, again, this is a split screen in half. This sink was originally located in the server room, which I'll show you in a little bit. Obviously, we didn't want water next to all the, the IT equipment, plus it was always a plan at some point to move that out, so we, it's, this sink was there. We just repurposed it, relocated it in the garage, excuse me. And you can see we have all the washing materials, you know, we call it the wash rack or what have you, for the squad cars, where we wash all our vehicles and store equipment. And we're still finishing some of the shelving and stuff. We're about 99% there, but, and we're a little further along than some of these photos. On the right side, this is just a picture of the new handicap door openers. The previous system was probably 15-plus years old. The openers on the old system wouldn't talk to the automatic system anymore, and it was so old and outdated, the closest contractor I could find to service them was in, in Minneapolis. So, contacted some local vendors, and the cheapest and best route was just to replace them. They weren't working anymore. They, they weren't working. So, next slide? The HVAC system that we upgraded, just a couple photos. The old garage had this radiant heat system that you see that ran the length of the garage, kind of like a radiant heat system that you'd find in old hockey arenas. Funny story about that, when they originally put that in, I remember that, it was about 15 years ago or so, they wanted to center it over the garage. However, that, that radiant heater puts off such immense heat, they're afraid it'd melt the light racks on the squad cars. So they had to move it back, as you can see, so it was off-center. And when, when that was running, when you stood underneath it, like, felt like your head was going to start on fire. Like, it was, it was not efficient, wasn't the proper heating system, what have you. you. So, split screen again, you can see on the right side, uh, uh, local contractors, several bids we received, everyone's option was to put in these split mini units, we actually put three of those in, um, two in the main garage, north and south wall, and then we have one in the server room that I'll show you, um, so each one can be independently set for different temperatures, they heat cool, dehumidify, the air, uh, and the compressors are up on the, on the roof. Okay? Uh, air exchangers and fans, this is honestly what I think is the coolest piece, and I know this isn't very exciting, but you can see the air exchanger that we have in the garage, that obviously just moves the air, and then we just added two fans, uh, on the right side, as you'll see, in the ceiling. So before, um, in our garage, you can see this yellow line that runs across the screen, that's actually a little bit of a hump or dike in the floor, just because of how the floor is not level, a lot of the water would run back towards the main door back in the day, so we, as a fix, um, had, uh, the floor company put in that little dike system, and we'd always squeegee the water to the floor drains, each, each bay has a floor drain, and there was always water constantly on the floor, whether it was in winter, or when you wash your cars, or what have you, to the, and, and underneath that garage is the basement, and so it's just a concrete ceiling or floor, whichever way you look at it, and at times we'd get water that would seep through the floor. To the point, we had to have the garage resurface the floor, um, we ended up getting some cracks and some water leaking into the basement, where we keep evidence and different things like that. Now with this air exchanger and these fans, um, if you wash a car, within like two hours, the floor's dry, it's always, always dry. I've, I've honestly, it's pretty rare to even see our floor dry, it always seemed like there was some pooling or puddling on the floor, so just installing this system alone, which was actually very inexpensive, is, is, is really gonna make the longevity of that floor, you know, we have zero water problems anymore, uh, so just one system like that has made a huge change for us at the police department. Next slide? Got a boring photo, just picture of the doors on the right side, these are those, uh, classroom doors that we have replaced, you can see their electronic strike plate, and then the key fob system on the right side to access each door. Um, the, the door locks, the handicap, or the, I'm sorry, I said handicap, I meant classroom doors, uh, they're always locked from the outside and always unlocked from the inside, that's what they call them, classroom doors, so, those are basically at every entry door into our, our building right now. Okay? Um, this is just a picture of the security camera system, this is the TV that we have in our office area, where we can display whichever cameras we want, so we can always view those and see who's coming and going around our building. Next photo? Again, just a view of the camera system, or, or, or cameras, you can see on the left side, that's what the indoor cameras look like, on the right side, the exterior cameras are called a bullet camera, are made for, for, uh, inclement weather. Next? So this is the armory or server room, um, and this is a picture from the left side, uh, again, split screen on the left side, would be looking at the armory, uh, from the garage, as you can see, it's a wall, uh, it's a block structure, we have a secure, uh, uh, commercial door with controlled access at that room also, so I can control who has access to it, um, which officers, what staff, uh, anybody who enters that room. The right side you'll see is like standing in the doorway, looking into that room, and you can see, we have some rack shelving on either side of the walls, and then in the back, which Chad's gonna briefly talk about shortly, is all the server, uh, equipment. We actually put in another layer of protection, we put in that gate or fenced area, uh, as a partition between the armory and the IT room, again, has another layer of, of security, and then again, we can control access and who has access into that, uh, uh, the server room, which right now is just IT and, and PD admin, so, again, just another layer of security and protection that we need, that I'll, I'll explain just briefly in a minute. Next slide? This is just the pictures of the shelving and the armory, this is where we're gonna retrofit for firearm storage on the right side, um, you know, that's where we keep ammunition, civil unrest gear, um, entry tools, anything like that related that want to keep in secure storage, you can see the mini split server, or mini split up on the corner. That armory, again, server room is independently heated and cooled, obviously, those servers put out immense heat, that way we can climate control that as, as what's needed, and so far, it's just worked, worked beautifully, so. Next slide? Here's just some completed views, uh, of the garage, I'm standing in the corner looking to the north with the cars in there, just a nice picture showing you all the squad cars, uh, the completed ceiling tin, uh, kind of final product. Next slide? Again, I'm standing in the corner, looking back, again, completed picture, all the four squad cars in the right corner, I'll show you one better picture, but we have our fifth squad car in there, so we have four squads that are on the road every day, and then we have the fifth squad, which is a complete squad, is spare squad ready to go at any time, if, uh, any other cars need repairs or get damaged or something. Next slide? And again, another picture looking back, four squads' cars and, and the fifth one in the corner, which we've really never done before, but by remodeling and changing everything and kind of doing all these changes, now we can have all five squad cars, uh, in the garage at all times, which the spare squad used to sit outside all the time, you know, batteries are dead, or in the winter, you know, snow and everything, so it's just really, really nice to be able to, uh, utilize that this way, so. Yeah, next slide? So that's kind of the pictures I have, um, you know, this was the largest building upgrade that we've completed one time in the police department, you know, for many, it may just seem like a garage, however, for us, it's much, much more than that, right? You know, the main, or one of the real nice checkboxes is it meets all the state and federal CGIS compliance, CGIS stands for Criminal Justice Information System, and I think I've kind of discussed this a little bit more, but, um, you know, that has to do with running criminal histories on people, driver's license, all that private, really sensitive information, the state and federal government regulate how you can access or have access to that data. Part of that is a secure server room, so Chad, uh, wanting to upgrade the entire city's servers, part of that, the server for the police department that we run on the CGIS system, as we call it, has to be located at the police department. So that's where Chad and I kind of teamed up together and said, well, if we're gonna do that, maybe we just put everything at the police department in that secure room, you know, with the HVAC system and everything, so that's kind of how that morphed into more than just an armory for us, but a whole, uh, server room and everything that we worked together on. You know, that's secure door, uh, controlled access, again, that's a state and federal requirement, um, you know, only certain people with certain requirements, certain training, et cetera, uh, who are vetted properly can have access to our building, you have a nice piece on that, uh, like when people were working on our garage, I could give them a, a key fob that would only let them in the garage, nowhere else, right, and I could have it set for one day, two days indefinitely, however that works out, so, plus we have that key management, you know, before, we really didn't know how many keys were out there over the years, right? For now, um, employees start, give them a key, they quit, it's, you know, keystroke on a keyboard, and their, and their access is denied, so, it just really gets us in that compliance when we are audited, which we get audited every three years by the state, to make sure we're in compliance with all these recommendations, shouldn't say recommendation, requirements, and then the security cameras, they're not a requirement, but they're highly recommended, so again, we kind of just go hand in hand with all the security and all the equipment we have at the police department, but overall, I would say more than anything, it just has boosted officer morale, I just can't even begin to tell you how much it has, you know, that garage is like our second office, um, you know, we process evidence out there, we do mission briefings, um, squad maintenance, training, um, you know, recruiting tool, um, to have a space like that for officers to work and, and much, much more. I've received such positive feedback, uh, from our officers, they're super excited, appreciative, and, and proud of that space, you know? Before, uh, trying to recruit officers and bringing them in, you're almost embarrassed, right, to bring them in the garage, now, you're proud of this space and everything we have, so, just really want to thank council and the mayor for allowing us to use those funds for this, um, and encourage anybody if you ever want to come see it in person, look me up, I'm proud of it, I'd happy to show anybody if they want to come take a tour. Thank you, if there's any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Darren.
Thanks, Darren.
Hey, Darren. Hey, Darren, I did have one thing, um, I know that we've had a couple citizens that have, um, called and concerns about people parking on those dikes, and I know Corky had mentioned something to you about that, but I just wanted to make sure it was on the record for those who've been calling and asking us individually, um, what can be done if signage and things like that, maybe?
Yep, so, y- y- thank you for bringing that up, yeah, I have met with Corky, uh, I, I've driven down to those areas, and I think we can do some signage, we've also, uh, I have memos throughout the police department for increased, uh, patrol, because obviously on the levees, we want to be reasonable at letting them fish and have access to the system, but not to drive on that. I know what areas you're talking about, I have received those complaints also, um, we are addressing it, and I, I do, um, that's the next step on looking at doing some different signage in a few locations, some of the areas where it's more popular for fishing, where they like to drive over that dike system, so.
We just have some very vigilant citizens who like to share and provide pictures and all those things, and so I just want to make sure we're...
No, I appreciate, we, we are on top of that, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, I'm just gonna briefly piggyback off of Darren's presentation, um, and forgive me, I'll, uh, I'll stay back here where I can, uh, can drive for the broadcast as well, my plans for having the keyboard up there at the podium, uh, were, didn't, didn't work so well, it was a little, little too far away. Um, so the first thing I'm gonna do is just bring up an image here, which was the original server infrastructure that we had at the police department. Um, it began life during my first, I'll call it tour of duty, uh, in 2002, um, and, um, originally, if you can see in the back upper left, there's a, a board that's affixed to the, to the wall, um, that was where I had the cable modem, and I had the first original server that was at the police department. Um, when I left in 2006, that was the state that things were in, when I returned, this, uh, this was the server infrastructure in place for the police department. Um, it was extremely difficult, as you can imagine, um, to try and make heads or tails of any failures that might come up with that infrastructure. Um, we had radios, um, that connected not only the police department to city hall, but city hall to the fire department, and the fire department to the police department, all of that ran through this closet, and we were having frequent failures and difficulties in maintaining those links, so, it was really, uh, it was really opportune to have the unrestricted funds available to us and the partnership, um, that was extended to us, uh, from the police department to build our, our new secure data center facility. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk just briefly a little bit about exactly what, what went into that, to that effort. So let me pull my PowerPoint presentation back up. Okay. Get this out for the world to see. All right, um, so first, I want to just touch on a little bit about some of the upgrades that have taken place in the last, uh, two years overall within the city, because it kind of ties in with this server infrastructure upgrade. Um, so, originally, we had a combination of aging desktop computers and, uh, Chromebooks that were, um, out, uh, for our city employees and for our city council members, we're still very much in the process of upgrading, um, I know one of the things that we'll be looking at for the 24 budget is replacing the Chromebooks that city council, um, has with the new Microsoft Surface Pro platform. Um, I've talked a, a little bit in the past about how that upgrade started with all of our city department heads, and we have slowly rolled those out across the city to, um, all city departments, um, where a tablet and laptop, uh, hasn't been feasible, we've now started looking at what we call a NUC, which is a tiny little one-foot by one-foot computer, you can see a picture of it up there on the screen, that actually just affixes to the back of an existing monitor. Um, it's, uh, about a $600 upgrade, um, and it is about four times as powerful as a previous desktop computer that was in place at, at most of the locations. Um, so, between those, uh, two pieces of hardware, we've replaced, uh, roughly three-quarters of all equipment within the city, and we're looking at somewhere close to 70 computers overall at, at this time. Um, our office productivity, so, when I returned in 2021, um, the city was using the Gmail platform for its word processing, for its spreadsheet software, and for its email as well, um, and we have now successfully completed a migration over to the new Microsoft 365 platform, um, which allows everyone to use Microsoft Word, Microsoft Excel, um, and Outlook, um, and we've, uh, we've received really good feedback from city employees that that is a, a platform that they prefer to use. Um, we have completely replaced our, our website platform, we're using the Civic Plus platform for that, the idea being that individual departments are able to keep their own section of the site up to date, um, we're also looking at an opportunity to, um, further pull together our social media platforms, such as Facebook and, um, YouTube, uh, together, um, to more effectively have a common source of messaging for information within the city. Um, a big part of our network infrastructure upgrade was, um, completing a move to the Halsted Telephone Company's fiber system, um, that is now up and operational for us, um, that took the, the term of a, an agreement that brought fiber optic cabling into not only our police department, but here at city hall, at the fire station, at the sports center, the street shop, the park shop, Valley Technology Park, Oak Court Apartments, the airport, and the water plant as well. Um, and so that fiber system allows all of those facilities to have connection to the internet and to each other, um, across what is a, a one gigabit, uh, per second internet circuit, um, so that was, uh, about 10 times more speed than we had with our, with our previous provider. Here's a picture, um, of, uh, what was on the other side of the fence in, in Darren's presentation, um, this is the new, uh, these are the two new racks, uh, on the right-hand side, um, you can see the equipment that's located there, it's much more organized, it's much cleaner, um, Zach and I are able, at a, at a glance, to be able to see what's connected to where and what the status of that equipment is. Um, there's, uh, there's storage space for additional future equipment to go into those racks, um, there's very good, uh, we concentrated on very good cable management, you can see that across the, they call it the ladder at the top of the racks. Um, the servers themselves, uh, those are located on the left-hand side, there are three servers that are there, and in that infrastructure, that handles, uh, close to about 20 virtual servers, and those servers before this upgrade lived at various departments, such as the fire department, city hall, uh, and the police department individually, um, so we really consolidated all of this together into a, uh, into one single secured location as, as Darren talked about. Um, here's a couple of shots of the networking equipment upgrades that happened at all of the city buildings, um, not only did we replace the servers, but we replaced all of what we call the switches, so you can think of that as, um, basically the telephone operator that allows the, uh, information to pass from the servers to the workstations, um, we replaced that equipment in every single city building there was, um, and that also included new wireless access points in all of the buildings as well, and there's a shot of, uh, Zach, hard at work, uh, up on a 50-foot ladder in the fire department, drilling into the concrete ceiling to be able to mount, uh, one of those wireless access points in the, in the fire bay. Okay? Um, finally, and we're nearing the end of my, my presentation, I promise, uh, our virtualization server update, um, I mentioned that all of our physical servers were replaced, um, we are now running the latest version of the virtualization software, we are now running the latest version of the Microsoft Server Operating System, and it is our intention to keep all of that software constantly up to date and patched and, and current, and that avoids any issues with, um, security or security-related incidents. Yeah. Finally, uh, what's next? Corky, uh, touched on this briefly during his report, um, finality was our existing phone system, uh, that consisted of a server that was here at city hall, and, uh, roughly about 50 phones across the city in different buildings, um, that system has reached the end of its life, it is at the end of support, as the vendor calls it, um, so, we were actually able to work with, uh, Sangoma, um, they're the company that actually sells and supports that phone system, to move to a cloud-hosted version of the phone system, um, where we'd no longer have to run a server on premises or, or here within the city. Um, the handsets themselves need to be upgraded, but instead of a capital equipment expenditure to replace all 50 of those phones, we entered into what is effectively a lease with that Sangoma. Um, so, we will basically be leasing that hardware over the turn, over a three-year term of the agreement, and at the end of that three years, then, um, we continue that lease forward and we get new phone equipment, so it's a, it's a win-win for the city. Um, and then finally, uh, executive, or excuse me, time management, or electronic time management, um, electronic timekeeping within the city, um, we're going to be, uh, talking with all departments to visit about what their needs are for electronic timekeeping, um, there's some very individual needs, uh, that, that we know will come up in that conversation with the departments, but, uh, we would like to get that implemented and, uh, and move Crookston to a, to a place where we're able to not only, uh, keep track of our, of the hours of our employees, but also to have some better reporting capabilities so that we can see exactly, um, where that time is being spent, and it, it just provides for greater overall accountability within the city. And that's the end of what I have for you, are there, are there any questions I can answer?
Been busy.
Been busy, yes, sir.
Chad, can I just clarify the timekeeping, meaning that like, um, we'll pretty much...
Chad, can I just clarify the timekeeping, meaning that like we'll pretty much digitize like time cards for people and that will maybe cut down on the amount of time it takes to process for bill, for paychecks and things of that nature?
That, that's correct. In addition to just the electronic time cards, it also provides the city with a system for leave requests and tracking vacation and sick leave and and all of those things. When I have used previous, or used systems like that in in previous cities that I've worked for, for example, the workflows that that introduces is if I had a staff member who was, woke up and was ill, didn't, couldn't make it into work, and this was clutch, especially during the times, as you can imagine, of COVID, they would take, they had an app on their phone or on their laptop and they would make the time off request. And because the workflow that was present, that made its way to, to my app that I could just simply get a notification and and approve, and then it would move on to to payroll to be able to to process. So it's, it was very smooth, very smooth process.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
So we, the mosquito count over the weekend was at an average of 85 per day. So we will be, it looks like it's going to be good weather for spraying tomorrow night. So we're gonna, we're gonna start spraying at nine o'clock tomorrow night and we should be able to get the whole town by about midnight. If not, we'll spray again the next good wind window. The street sweeper continues to to go through town. They've cleaned downtown entirely and are working their way through the additions. Jake and I have been working with different local companies to get, try and piece a, a project together for the bathhouse. So we have bids for slabs, plumbing, HVAC, and I think I'm getting close to finally getting a contractor that can bid the actual bid, building now. So there is a sewer issue out by, on the south end of South Main that I've been working on for a few weeks now. It's difficult working with the railroad. It's within the railroad right away. I'm trying to get a permit to, to fix a collapsed, collapsed manhole out there. So Frank has been patient with me at LaBuddy, so, but I'm, I'm working on getting that, getting that resolved. The Public Works crews have been patching some manholes that had some leaks around them, stormwater manholes. So fixing some grout issues where there was some holes in the streets next to structures. Benoit Excavating fixed a service leak on Holly today. And I've, sure you guys have received a few calls, but the last two years sod some areas that are having some issues. So I, Rickord and I are trying to figure out exactly what's going on there and he's promised that he will make it right this fall and either intercede where he thinks it'll work or replace the sod where it needs to be replaced. So we've gotten a few calls and it's, just doesn't make sense to try and plant sod in July. So we'll wait till this fall when it, when it should take better. So that is all I have on my checklist for today.
I have a question.
Yep.
I noticed that the fire hydrant on Elbert and Third.
Elbert and Third, okay.
You have a connect, our setup, and I understand that they're watering, the city is watering the second and first and second avenue grass this year?
That's Rickord's doing that.
And why is, aren't the people responsible for doing their own watering after a year?
I, I mean, I, I don't know. Me and, me and Tim have talked about that a little bit. I mean, after the sod roots take within a few, we'll just say two months of being planted, it should be able to go dormant too. So I've, I don't know. I, I need to, I need to, we need to get to the bottom of, I don't know if it's a soil issue or if it, you know, it could be the soil that was installed by the contractor, which probably isn't very likely because it was two years of projects that is having issues, but it's possible it came from the same place. It could be a pH issue with the sod, with the soil that was put in there that the sod won't take. I don't know. It's, I haven't, I haven't had enough time to dig into it. I mean, yes, if they water $200 worth of water for every month for the rest of the summer, it's going to stay alive, but is that realistic to ask the residents to do? I don't think so.
So this is replacement, that the city is replacing that sod for them?
It was, it was the, it was like the handicap accessible sidewalks on the corner of Elm and Central. So it was all of that sod and some of it is dead, dead right now. And I really don't think it's going to come back on its own. So we'll, Todd and I'll come up with a game plan for the fall for those areas and we're working on it anyways, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I just had a resident kind of wondering why the city is watering again.
I, I think Tim's watering it kind of as a test for himself to see what happened. He, I, he was pretty confident that that stuff was going to make it. He thought it just needed a couple of shots of water to keep it going, so.
Okay. I have an answer. Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon. Kerry, welcome back.
So I was at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference in Duluth and I rented a few of our different council people, had a lot of insight there. I think we learned, there was a lot of good information on the budget that came down from the state this year. Then I went over to the Economic Development Conference down in Rochester and that was excellent. And again, it was a little bit more about economic development down there. So I'm sure I'll be running some ideas by you guys over the next year while I get my thoughts together on that. Internally, we've been busy. We've got the storefront revitalization program is going on. We've had 16 applications have been provided to local business owners. Five have been received by our department. They've come back. Three have been approved by our department and appointed to design committee. This is Kami's report, by the way. And two of which have received their funding. They'll get their funding this week. So we're moving forward on that. There's a couple of other businesses I've been trying to call to make sure people know that we are doing the storefront revitalization. There is opportunity. It's up to $5,000 and they're going to match 25% or if they're working with the chamber, they can match 20% on that. So get ahold of our department if you have any questions on that. We'd love to see our, all of our businesses get something going, so.
Kerry, can I confirm on that? Was that like up to 10 applicants? Was there like a number of applicants?
So there's, we did set aside 10,000, you're correct. We set aside $10,000 for those people who have absolutely just can't, don't have any money to even match anything because it's, you know, some people just don't have it. So for those that really are, they really want to do something, but they don't have any money for the match, well, we are looking at projects up to $1,000 for those people. That's not for somebody who's going to 5,000.
Sure.
Yeah, the first 1,000 is not free. That, that's just set aside for those cases where it's a mom and pop shop, they just want to get it and they, you know, they want a new door, they need a sign. We just want to help get a bucket of paint. I don't care. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, just a help. So it's for the outside of the building and that's for windows, doors, signage, paint, anything that's going to make, to make it look better. So nothing that's going to be practical. I'm joking. So also, we've applied for the HUD's Emergency Safety and Security Grant. I want to thank Chad and his department for getting all of our quotes for that for Oak Court. And Kami wrote her first full grant by herself and she did a really good job on it. We've submitted that. So it will be basically the same situation and with the cameras and the FOB that that I, that you just saw the police department get. And that's going to help our Oak Court residents. You know, one of the things for people is they need a roof and they need shelter and they need food, but the next level of life is to be feel safe. And this is one of those things that we're doing to try to help our, our community feel safe over at Oak Court and we'll just keep working on projects over there. We're still in the process of generating demolition estimates for Tri Valley. We're trying to pull together some funding for that, that Tri Valley building. I think we met with the council, each one of you, we met and you all agreed that that's a building we need to continue to pursue and then redevelop that lot. So just so you know, we're still working on that. We're moving forward with the Small Cities Development Grant that will potentially fund $1.4 million in 2025. And it would be in 2025 and 2026, it'd be a two-year project. And that would help residential and commercial rehabilitations. We're focusing in the most part on Ward Four. And if we don't get enough applicants in Ward Four, we'll look at the flats and then we'll look over to, I know, right? And then we'll look over to by Oak Court over there. And I forget the name of that area by Oak Court.
Sampson.
Sampson.
Sampson Edition, thank you. Sorry about that. Public Works and EDA, we're working on requesting a proposal. I think Brandon skipped out on this, but we're working to have a request for proposal to have some engineers look at our streets, to assess every one of our streets, sidewalks, water, sewer. And so we're just kind of getting that project going. We'll probably have more on that in the next couple of weeks, but just to get an assessment of of the exact condition and then you guys can get it on your, on your map of when do you want to work on the streets, when can they be done, that way we'll be able to help all of us with our budgeting. So that is in the process and Brandon and I will have more of that happening. Corky said SEH Valley is the Washington School. We're excited about that. We'll wait on the, on the report for Washington School and we'll continue to work with childcare and that type of thing over there. And then I think that you did talk about elders, Corky. They're going to want, come on a Thursday in August is one of the things, the least for my board over at the, at the Economic Development. And I believe that Audrey will be reaching out to the council, or maybe she already has, to see if there's a Thursday in August that will work. And then we can talk about the different potential funding and the different, different methods available to help fund projects in Crookston. So if you don't hear from her, reach out to her and we'll get that scheduled and we'll move forward with that in August. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Kerry.
Thanks, Kerry.
So the park staff have continued to work throughout the summer just on various projects, mowing, weed whipping all our parks and areas around town. Recreation had a week off last week. We always take the fourth off, the week of the fourth. So they continue, the activities continue today, things that are, have been running. Working on budgets, myself, I have a meeting with Audrey on Thursday to to go over some things with budgeting. And then just an update on the pool that I got from Michaela. So the pool is, the pump is running, that's circulating, it's putting chemical through. The heat pumps and actuators were put in. We did have an issue. The, the HVAC engineer came in and there was a gas pipe in the chemical pump room that was rotten. Like he was afraid to even touch it, that it would break. So that did get fixed last week. So we are now heating the pool. So the pool's currently sitting at 78 degrees. We got to remember there's a lot of water in there and it's, and it's, it's a, it's a competitive pool in a, in a dive well. So there's a lot of water. So with chemicals running and and things running right now, we are, we are getting to a point which our chemical levels should be at. So it's just taking some time. Swim lessons, we had to, we had to scratch swim lessons for July because we're not open yet and we're also having staffing issues. We have three lifeguards currently. One lifeguard can only work on the weekends, the other one can only work every other day. And then one of them has to get recertified, which is fine because Michaela can do that. And actually, I take that back, we have four. We, we talked to a lady today. So we will continue to work on lifeguards. We do not have an accurate number or an answer yet on when we're going to open. We just want to make sure everything is up to date, you know, safety-wise. That's our big concern. So we will continue to keep working. I know Michaela's been over there all weekend as well as today and in the evening to work on things. So as soon as we, I know when we're going to open, I will make it public and and let everyone know, so.
Can you send us an email on that too? Just as an example?
When we're going to open? Yes, I can.
I think all of us have probably had a phone call or two about when it was going to open, especially since the last thing that most people knew was once we got the actuator and that, it would be good to go.
Brandon, that, that gas pipe you mentioned, was that a natural gas pipe?
Yeah, it's the one that runs through the boiler to to heat the building in the pool.
And it was so brittle that it was ready to?
He wasn't, yeah, it was, it was Adam Zinks that came in and did the, the study for the HVAC analysis. And I went down there, he called me and he said, come down here. And I said, I went down there and it's, it was brittle. I mean, he, he wouldn't even push on it.
Wow, dodged a bullet there then probably if that thing would have broke.
Yeah, exactly. So, and that's not just the only, I mean, the piping in there, I've showed you guys pictures. It's, so we, we'll wait till we get our analysis back, but just, just a kind of a heads up to everyone.
On the analysis, they've, they've checked out other gas piping?
Yes, that was part of the HVAC and the plumbing on the Lund Seth side, so.
What, what did it cost to replace that pipe?
I haven't got the bill yet.
What, okay, so the, this is going to be a good enough, uh, look at everything for a while? Because I mean, we had two things go out and then now this pipe. Is, has someone been looking at this?
The analysis, I think the analysis is going to tell us that.
Is it a significant cost, I think is what he's asking?
A significant cost?
To have replaced that pipe?
I don't think it was a significant cost to, to replace what we did.
But, but we're not going to have to replace other pipes as well?
I can't, I can't answer that.
But I mean, I feel like we just paid a bunch of money to have this whole place looked over again and we don't know if it's going to be a thing?
Excuse me?
Is that still in process?
You've got two people asking me questions here.
Sorry, I think that might be still in process.
Well, yeah, I mean, like, yeah, we just had, we just paid a lot of money to have someone go look at our stuff again and they were afraid to touch a pipe. Like, is this going to be a thing for other pipes? Like, is this going to be a big problem for the whole place?
I, it could be, yeah, it could be.
Corky, when is that going to be done? The full analysis?
I can't tell you exact date, but I did talk with Bergstrom who did this and he said that we should be receiving that probably before the end of July, the final report on the swimming pool in terms of the structural analysis. The piping is a part of that analysis.
It's too separate.
But it's part of the whole overall analysis.
And that's why I said we won't know until we get our analysis back.
And you were also saying that, was it the cost of the analysis was, was less than we originally had budgeted for?
Yes, exactly. The analysis for the Washington School and the pool and our, all of our facilities, we're only going to pay $3,500 more for all of that. That included Washington School and the second analysis of the swimming pool. But
But we don't have that yet.
Without getting too in-depth, when I spoke to the structural engineer and said, just tell me as briefly as you can, he said, the pool is not good. I said, don't tell me anything more, get specific.
Okay.
And that's the report.
I'll contact Adam tomorrow from Lund Seth and see where he's at or what he's thinking for when he's going to finish his report.
So we can coordinate those two.
So we can coordinate, yep. So, thank you.
Jake, can I ask one other question? I know that Crest has reached out to you guys at the university, the university. They were the ones who have all the educational pieces that they can work with Parks and Rec on, providing programming for kids.
Okay.
Have you guys gotten back to them?
I have not heard from Crest. I don't know who that is.
Okay. They, they said they've been
So the University of, in Crookston here?
Of Minnesota, mm-hmm.
Okay. Do you have a name?
Amber, yep. We can share it later, but she was waiting to hear back from you guys. And so I just want to make sure that that is something that gets on.
I will be on my radar, yep. But I, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, thanks Jake. Greg, anything tonight?
Your report tonight, you're up.
Thank you. Start with Kristi, anything?
I just got some phone calls this week in regards to the Dyke system and then also some thoughts of people have about the garbage discussion we'll have coming up and then mosquitoes. So other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Thank you. Henry?
Yeah, I also heard about mosquitoes, but good to hear that the street sweeper is going to be back up because that was the other thing I heard about. A lot of reports from everybody. Thank you, Darren. That was very in-depth. That was very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Clayton?
Other than mosquitoes, and I'd like to welcome Morgan, yep, to the council. Looking forward to working with you.
Thanks, Clayton. Don?
Welcome, Morgan. Good to have you on our, what is it, councilor? Councilor?
Councilor.
Just kidding. Quickly from the chamber. Quickly from the chamber, they have taken over the maroon planters in town. And they had, Walmart has provided the paint and the rollers and the paintbrushes to get those done. And they only have one left to assign, so that's going to, and there, if you look around now, some of them have done. And they improved the downtown, so that's very nice.
Yeah, and those are blue now, not maroon.
Didn't I say blue?
Maybe I misheard.
I think you did. No, just kidding.
Don, can I ask, who, you said the chamber took it over. Who was, who was originally doing it?
Well, the chamber was helping the city and.
Originally, the city had, I don't want to say contracts, but those had been taken by businesses or people to keep them up.
Okay.
They have plaques on them.
And they're, they're doing a good job, they look pretty good.
Okay.
Yep, so.
Wasn't it where the city itself, the boards are rotten, they'd replace them, but wherever, had took care of the plan or they would paint them?
Yeah, and they, yeah, yep. And they, they didn't, they're not charging this year because they wanted to get them fixed up. So there was, they used to charge like $35 and then for a plaque to put on them and so forth. But this year is, is free, so, and so. Only have one left, so if anybody's interested in painting.
Where is it located?
Over by, that way. It's over by the, by the, what's her, Shirley Iverson's shop. There's two that aren't done yet, so.
Oh, outside the Old View?
And Henry, you can go over there and help him out with you.
Okay, yeah. I, I had to pull weeds out of that one.
That's all I have, no, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Joel?
No report, Your Honor.
Elaine?
So I, I want to thank Brandon for all the work that he's done getting our computer system up to the 21st century. I mean, when, for those of us that work in, 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 in business atmospheres in this, in this day and age, I can't imagine what Brandon thought when he came back to see.
Chad.
Or Chad, sorry. Sorry, Chad.
I was like, Brandon?
What the situation was of the current state of our computer system. And that, that leads me back to thanking the council of, you know, we, we've been, I've been on the council a few years now. And we go through our budget process. And it seems like for the past few years, we all seem to be all happy and whatever department heads say during the budget process, nobody challenges hardly anything in the budget process when it comes to giving money for, for needs like Chad needed all, all these times. And then when it comes to pay for it, that's when everybody seems to want to give their opinion. So I, I just say, we, we finally got something done with the police department and, and, and our computer system, that our city can start to be a little bit more proud of the, the stuff that we have. I mean, Crookston can have nice things, but we just got to pay for them. We can't, we can't just, you know, get the levy down just because it just feels good all the time. We have to stick some money back into our community. So I appreciate everybody's work over the last couple of years. And I'm sure Chad, you know, and our police chief do as well. So thanks, thanks for everybody for a job well done, I think.
And Elaine, I would add to that, that also you guys doing those presentations, I think is really a powerful reminder of like, what the needs are and these aren't things that are just out there in the atmosphere. And I think it also helps our citizens understand what it is and why there's a need. And so I think that these are the types of things that we'd like to see as council, is what is that, what is a fruition of that budget and those needs? So we can actually say, this is where your, your tax dollars are going, right? There is obviously a need, there is obviously way too old of, of, of software and hardware. And the police department, obviously, there was a need there. And I think, you know, Brandon, what you brought, or, sorry, Chief, what you brought up was, everybody's Brandon. Brandon, thank you.
Brandon, sit in the back, would you?
The IT director.
I think it says something when we talk about the retention of officers and things like that, that these upgrades aren't just about the actual, the actual physical things, but also about how that affects our ability to keep people and recruit people. So just kind of keeping those things in mind as well.
All I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim?
I just wanted to echo the kudos to the chamber for painting Crookston beautiful. And also kudos, Chief Darren and Chad Brandon, for the exquisite and brilliant, brilliant presentation tonight. I echo Christie's sentiments. It's really important for our community to understand that we, we, we are the, the powers of the purse here in our community. And we take the work of being stewards of your tax dollars and the other resources of talent as well in this community very seriously. So it's just, it's been a delight. I haven't been on the council for years, but it feels like it sometimes. Today, no. But really, I think that what we're seeing in action is a really powerful forward movement for our community. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thanks, Tim. Well, I'm not going to bring up any names because I'll probably get them wrong, so.
I'll at least save that one.
Brandon.
Maybe we should have you stand up here, not just ahead, Chad.
But council members said, just kudos to IT and the police. Got something very proud, especially of the police for recruitment tool and the morale for the officers. And I'd like to give a thank you to the Wayne Melby family of Broche Chevrolet for their donation to Park and Rec. And also a donation to the police department for United Way, so. Or Night, I'm sorry, Night to Night. So, see, I did get something wrong. Calling orders here. But anyway, Morgan, once again, congratulations. Look forward to being part of this group, so. Just a reminder, we are going to have a Ways and Means shortly. And nothing else become before council, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Meeting for Monday, July tenth, twenty twenty-three. I guess the order on the agenda, we got a couple items. First one is garbage discussion. Does Corky or Brandon lead that off?
Brandon leads that off and carries it.
Are you sure it's Brandon?
Is it not Chad?
His name, his name is Brandon Chad, and that's Chad Brandon back there.
Can I, is this working Chad or not?
Uh, the writing is, let me get your presentation.
So, uh, basically, I've put a few of my ideas of where we could go with garbage and let you guys steer the ship on where you want the service to go and, uh, what type of services we'd like to provide. So, um, I don't, I know Shannon, uh, tried to privatize or bid out the garbage services. What was it? Do you remember Dale, three, four years ago, probably five? Everything feels like three, four years ago now.
I think it was before COVID.
Okay.
It was before I moved back.
And reading through those notes, it was pretty unsuccessful with even receiving any much interest from any private, companies to provide the service. Um, not saying that that couldn't change and, you know, that's, I, I guess technically I don't have that as an option in, in this presentation, but if you guys want to, uh, try and, put on an RFP for garbage services too, that's, that's another option just to keep in mind.
Yeah, what we're trying to do tonight is just let you know of the possibilities. We're not asking for a decision other than tell us what you would like to see us gather for your consideration.
I think just going back when we were looking at that private collector, we had one out of East Grand Forks that was willing to do, but there was no branches and no spring or fall cleanup.
Wasn't it quite expensive?
The first, the first, I don't know, I think it was like a three-year contract maybe, and it was reasonable. But after that, I think it was gonna make it unaffordable for a lot of the residents.
Well, some, I'll listen to Brandon's, um, what he's got to say and then we'll
Sure, open it up.
go from there. I don't wanna say something that he's already got going on here, so.
Do you, Chad, would I just hit return or what?
Hey.
Hey, hey. Okay, so this is the, this, these are the totals for the garbage, uh, delivered to the transfer station with our current service. So, um, you know, they, they buy the bags and a future slide, I have the pricing for the bags. Then I just use Google statistics for trash per household, um, just to show you the percentages of the community that we're serving right now. And, uh, you know, you can see in, in May, it goes up to twelve percent. That's because of cleanup week, but other than that, the, uh, the rest of the year, it's pretty, pretty average. Three percent of the community is, is using the garbage services and, you know, I, I, I had the guys count households to about two months ago and it, it was pretty similar. It was for four percent. So about four percent of the community is using the services and I would probably say the majority of them are the senior population in the community. Uh, a lot of, a lot of our community just brings their garbage out to the transfer station, so.
Can I ask you, what do we, what is the eighteen point one? What does that mean? Is that like bags per household? Is that pounds of garbage? What is that?
That is, that is eighteen tons for the month. And I believe it, I think it was like a hundred and twenty-seven, uh, or a hundred and thirty-seven pounds of garbage per person.
So that, that's actually what the transfer station took in?
That's what we hauled to the transfer station off of our truck.
Oh, okay.
Is eighteen tons. So, um, you know, we, we hauled one point two six ton of recycling that month to the, to the transfer station. So I just took that. I took that eighteen ton divided by the hundred and thirty-seven pounds that Google says each resident in the U.S. produces.
So, um, I don't, I'm not expecting you to have this stat. Is, is there possibly a way to work with, um, the transfer station to find out? And I know I can't, we can't quantify just to the city residents' garbage, but how much tons they take in, uh, a, a month. Is that, is that, I mean, I, what I'm trying to get at is I'm wondering, um, how big of a difference for the total tonnage of what they're taking in per month versus what we're delivering currently per month? Just to, just, just to see what the possibilities are if, if we went with a full-blown. Does that make sense?
Would that, would that be possible? Cause it's not just Kirkston residents.
I know, I know, we'd have to extrapolate out what, well, I, I, I get it. It's not gonna be a hundred percent, but I mean.
I mean, it'd probably be slightly more accurate if I just took the average with our census population and got you an expected total tonnage of the year, right? I could get you that pretty easy.
Cause I think that would be helpful if we're deciding to go with a, um, a service to understand the needs that we're gonna need for trucks.
Yep.
And then as far as employees to actually get the job done.
Yep, for sure. Um, so, uh, I guess that's the gist of that. This is the current process for collecting, uh, garbage services. So we, 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 uh, we collect recycling on the first week of every month. Um, and then, so it's a once a month service, which I feel like, uh, it, it just, it needs to be more often if we're gonna do it. People don't wanna hang on to the recycling. It starts to stink and la di da di da. So, um, currently we charge six dollars a month on a drive-by fee on the water bill. That brings in about a hundred thousand dollars in revenue for the garbage services. And then we, we charge, uh, ten, a buck ten per thirty-gallon bag and fifty-five cents per thirteen-gallon bag. You know, a lot of that goes with some of the can stuff that I'm gonna have to dig into is there's some taxes that go into waste management that require a certain amount of tax and John and, uh, and Jake from the county have said they'd help me figure all that out, so.
Can I ask you questions on that? One is when we talk about a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars in revenue, we're talking about like what we're making after expenses?
Uh, that's just what we're bringing in. So here, here was our, our revenue in twenty-two. So we sold twenty-two thousand dollars worth of bags. Um, we brought in a hundred and thirty-four thousand on that six-dollar base on the water bill. And then, so that's a total of a hundred and fifty-six thousand. And as you can see, we, our total expenses for collecting last year were a hundred and eighty-two by the time you get the labor and fuel and.
Okay, so we're actually in the red. We're not.
That, yep, this was before I raised the rate.
Okay.
So this is to date. So, um, to date, we've sold almost eleven thousand in garbage bags, sixty-eight thousand in base. Um, so we're at, we brought in almost eighty grand and, and we've spent sixty-five thousand collecting, so. Uh, hypothetically, you're putting a little bit away for your future equipment, fuel, whatnot.
In that, and that, um, so this screen and the previous screen, the bags, only four, or roughly four percent of our population are making that number, right?
Yep.
So what I had people call me and ask me about is why is it that we're getting this charge on our, um, our bill of like, what is it? Six dollars, whatever it is. And then we're having to go and buy these bags on top of that. Why isn't it just there a flat rate on the water bill and then we can just use our own bags? Like what is so special about these bags that, and I don't know if there's some historical thought process on that, but it.
I believe it's the tax that's associated with the waste collected. So, um, I, I, I believe that was the reason for the bags is a thirty-gallon bag, um, hypothetically averages whatever, we'll say forty pounds, we'll just throw a number at it. And then the tax is associated with that. Is, is that believe why the bags are there? And it, it could be pretty similar with cans because, you know, every can has a, uh, when I was looking there, I think there was, it was thirty-five, sixty-five and ninety-five gallon cans that we could provide with the dumper that I'm gonna show you in, in future slides. So, um, I believe we could base the tax included in that gallons can where, you know, let's just say we charged a hundred dollars a year for the can. They could throw their own bags in there. Um, it would have to be household garbage, but then they wouldn't have to go buy a specific bag, so.
So is it either or? Like it's either we do cans or they have to continue to buy
It is not.
these specific things? Or is it something where we could just add that into the bill for a couple extra bucks and then they could just use their own bags?
Yeah, uh, we can do both and, um, I'll show you the different trucks and there's a pros and cons portion of.
Okay, I'll let you, keep doing that then.
Wasn't the purpose of the yellow bags too though, back when they implemented was with the recycling containers to try to get people to recycle?
Possibly. I'm sure it, when you were just collecting, um, garbage at no additional charge, yes, I'm sure it encouraged recycling too. And, you know, talking to John, uh, and Jake, there's, there's a large, there was large allocations um, of funding to help, uh, start and support new waste management programs. So, um, I kinda feel like we should maybe adopt, you know, adapt our current truck with a can dumper. It would number one, help us get a feel for if we were to just go with a voluntary program, how many people would voluntarily come in, buy a can, pay ten dollars a month? Um, and how many of those would offset bags? You know, I, I think a lot of, there was, there was a lot of, there was a lot of questions last time of going strictly to cans, cause you know, there, there are elderly that use one thirteen-gallon bag every two weeks possibly.
I always say we're the only community that has elderly. I mean, everybody has that problem. I'm just like.
Yep. No, for sure. And, but I, I think a good option is to just put a can dumper on our truck. It buys us time to put a, a, a grant application in for equipment that, that could pay for a fully automated truck, could pay for just a dual-chamber truck. I personally think a dual-chamber truck makes sense for Kirkston. You could do weekly recycling and garbage pickup. You can grab them both at the same time. They stay separate. Um, and, you know, you, yes, you still have the two employees, but, um, but then you, you can still do bag service if you want to. Cause the guy's still on the back of the truck to grab the, grab the can and roll it to the truck and put it on the dumper. Um, and, you know, they're, right now, they're, you know, with the three percent, they're, they're done picking up garbage by nine-thirty in the morning every day. So, um, they have, you know, we would have to ga, it would give it, it would give, give us some time to gauge what the needs would be too. Um, so, but, uh.
That would be if you're retrofitting the current garbage truck rack?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is just the options going forward. Obviously, we can keep the same service, um, which I don't like with the very little utilization we have. Um, we could obviously discontinue garbage service and let a private industry take it over. Adding a, a dumper to our current garbage truck so we could continue to sell bags and add the cart option. We could purchase the, the split-chamber garbage truck, which was the one that I had in the budget, um, for this year and just really didn't know which way to go. So I didn't wanna commit us to that truck, so. And then, um, last option in my opinion is to get a fully automated, uh, truck that would, uh, have one operator. They would pull up to the can and it would grab the can itself and dump it automatically. So the, uh, cons of discontinuing, uh, or pros and cons, you know, we would be able to, you know, I, I don't think, I think we all would agree that we would like to keep cleanup week. Um, so it would, you know, we would, we would be able to reduce the, the base fee most likely. I, I think each cleanup, we pay about ten thousand dollars in landfill fees. So, um, you could obviously reduce it by, you know, eighty percent, still cover the, the, the cleanup fees, but, um, and then the cons would, would be we'd have to most likely rent a garbage truck eventually to, to do the cleanup week. And, uh, i- if there was a private garbage collection, like was stated earlier, it was pretty expensive and it would, it would probably drive up the cost for that three percent that are using the current services.
So. Holy, going, going back to the options.
Yep.
So.
Is there a handout?
Okay.
Some people have handouts.
Oh, just in the packet.
It was in the packet, yeah.
Add can dump, so continue selling bags and add cart op, add cart option, um. So, okay, let's say you got people that wanna continue using the bags. Would they still have to buy, have the cart option for recyclables? Or they could use what they're currently using?
They could use what they're currently using.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So our, our current truck would be something like this. So, uh, we would just put one can dumper on the back. So, uh, they would still have to make two passes through town, um, would be one of the cons and, and it still requires two operators. Um, if, it would, uh, the, the pro would be that you could add, uh, cans to the, to the services. And I have some estimates on what I, you know, it kinda depends on what, we would have to feel it out the first year on utilization. But what I estimate, the, the service for cans would have to be priced at to break even anyways. So this is a dual-chamber truck. It's got a dumper on both sides. Um, the, the guys still ride on the back. They just kinda ride off to the side. So one side would be sized for recycling, one side would be sized for, for household garbage. And then they'd be able to collect both at the same time. And then there wouldn't be any reason that we couldn't, uh, collect recycling weekly with that.
Can I ask where they, how the recycling would be collected? Is it gonna be like in a different container if we did the can service?
We, yes, we would have, uh, I've, I mean, we could still, with this truck, you could do both. The, we could use the existing recycling containers and we, we, if the, if the resident wanted a recycling, uh, rolling can, we could do that too.
So are you talking those little blue bins for recycling containers? Is that what?
You could still use those, yeah.
I don't think we ever got one when we bought our.
We did, it's probably up in my attic.
They're horrible. They let garbage blow all over town when it's windy and it's.
Yeah, those, those things are a joke, but anyhow.
And, and we could develop a policy that required a can too, and it would, we'll just say it's green with a recycling symbol on the side or whatnot. But, um, so, but the, the reason I like this truck is it just, it, it kee, it keeps the, it keeps the possibility of sending, uh, selling bags and having can dumping at the same time. Plus you're making one pass through town. You're, 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 you're having, uh, recycling weekly rather than monthly. Um, you know, the con is it's a three-hundred thousand dollar truck, but, um, you know, if you get a single-chamber truck, you're in the two-fifties anyways. So it's not a substantial, um, investment from what we have right now, so.
So is, is this different than like just retrofitting the current truck to just have adding the, the arm dumper?
So this, this would be our, this image right here is what the, our existing truck would kinda look like if it's just one chamber.
Right.
Um, you could, we would add a can dumper to the back, but they would have to go grab all the household garbage and then they would have to drive the road again and grab all the recycling.
Sure. I guess my question when we talk about these things is, um, cost. Cause I think first and foremost, people are worried about additional costs for garbage and then like, or is it gonna be something where those who are interested in purchasing the cans would then pay like the rental fee of ten dollars a month or something like that? And it wouldn't like significantly impact those who just choose not to utilize the service?
That's kind of where I feel we should go right away is just to feel this, the whole process how it is to have, um, you know, just keep this six-dollar drive-by fee and, and those who elect in would pay, we'll just hypothetically say ten dollars a month for their can. They have to purchase, well, we could build that into, but a can is about a hundred dollars. So just to purchase the can and then, uh.
So it wouldn't be a monthly fee? It would be just a one-time fee?
To purchase the can could be a one-time fee, but then you, I mean, there was either gonna have to be an annual fee for the can or a monthly fee.
Sure.
Um, I think just having a ten-dollar, uh, addition to a water bill, um, if they elect to have it, um, would be a good way to feel the service out. And, you know, if you, if you got two hundred, I, I, you know, I have estimate that two hundred and fifty people are using bags right now, so we'll just say half of those. I, I think I've talked to many residents in town that don't purchase bags that if they could pay an annual or a monthly fee for a can, that I think the utilization will go up. So it would give us a good feel for what the, what the, what the services could be. You know, I just don't.
Without making a real big commitment.
Without, yes. You know, the can dumper's twelve thousand dollars. If we buy, um, two hundred and fifty cans, it's thirty, twenty-eight thousand. So we have a, when Shannon and the council looked at garbage services that, whatever, five years ago, they started a reserve fund for a garbage system service. So there is eighty, mid-eighties, eighty-three, eighty-five thousand in reserves for a garbage truck that we, we could grab forty of that, uh, put a can dumper on, buy two hundred and fifty cans and see where it goes with that reserves right now.
And, and when you talk about the cons in this, you'd require two operators and two trips to collect all the recycling or all the, um, stuff. But if you're saying right now that they're done just doing garbage at nine-thirty in the morning, what does that make it then? Like twelve-thirty?
Yeah. I mean, it's, yeah, it's fuel and time.
Yeah, okay.
But, I mean, I, when they, when they went to twice a month collections for recycling, it, it, it honestly didn't change the tonnage much from what I saw of the meeting minutes. But I also think it wasn't very, it wasn't accurate. But I also think it wasn't very, it wasn't advertised. I don't think it was advertised very well. I don't think anybody knew what was really going on, so.
Okay.
But, so yeah, that, this, the additional trips around town and, uh, and whatnot is the cons of that one, so.
So with the dual capacity one, when you're doing recycling and then regular garbage, what would, would there be more trips for dumping? I'm trying to figure out the proper way to say it, but.
Pa- possibly, you know, it ob- obviously depends on the.
You're only doing half the truck of garbage.
Yeah.
Does recycling outweigh that or?
But I mean, the, yeah, the, the truck is, is, is I believe of, it's a twelve to sixteen ton truck and we haul eighteen tons the whole month. So hypothetically, you're probably, if your utilization doesn't go crazy, you're probably still, you might have to dump twice a day possibly. But it, it, it's not gonna be like twenty times a day. So unless the whole community starts using it, we would have to.
Have that conversation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, then, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Then about employees, now you say if you go with that, you're gonna have to have two on the back and the driver, right?
No, it would still just be the one on the back and the, and the driver.
Brendan, I've heard a lot of people talk about like the co-mingling of trash and recyclables. So that isn't the case for here then?
Well, so there's, there's a, there's some misinformation around that all garbage goes and gets tumbled through and is recycled. And technically that's true, but once you, if you throw cardboard and paper in with your household garbage, it gets wet and then it's not, it doesn't meet the standards to be recycled anymore. So, yes, if, if your garbage is perfectly dry and none of it cross contaminates, you hypothetically, it's gonna make it to Foston and it's gonna be recycled. But the, when I talked to Jake about that, he just said the reality is, is ninety-nine percent of that goes to the landfill, cause it's not recyclable anymore.
Okay.
But, you know, if we, if we have that second chamber and all the recyclables is, you know, drained cans and paper and cardboard, it's already intermingled when it goes into the truck. When the guys go and grab the recycling cans, you know, I, I get a couple of calls a month about our guys just throwing recyclables in the garbage truck, cause that looks like what they're doing. But they're on their second route and it's, it's going to, it's all getting chucked into the same truck. Um, and, and it's going to, it is getting dumped in the recyclables and, uh, going and getting recycled, so.
Okay.
And, you know, the other side of this is it, it doesn't matter how much garbage we haul to the transfer station. We do not pay for household garbage. So every household pays a hundred and forty dollars a month on their county taxes for the services. So us delivering the garbage outside of our cleanup week debris, we're billed for that, cause that's a lot of demo and not household garbage. But, um, all the garbage that, so everything that you saw on my spreadsheet, we, we didn't pay a penny to the county to haul to the transfer station. So if we were to provide a service that, um, would, would serve the entire community, we don't have to worry about the associated fees for landfill.
Did you say it's a hundred and forty dollars a month?
A year.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah.
I might've said a month.
I have more questions for you, Gary.
So Brendan, have you done a, um, city analysis of what cities around our area, maybe not even in our area, that have a private versus a, um, city, um, operated garbage collection? And then is there, is there something that you can provide maybe of how much that costs the residents roughly on each, each option?
I can call around to the, I haven't done that yet. I, I know that in Grand Forks, that every resident of Grand Forks is required to have one can. And I believe it's a base fee on their water of, that can is, I think, thirty or thirty-five dollars a month. So I would, you know, that's, 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 uh, can give you a feel for where they're at anyways, but.
It'd be about four hundred dollars a year.
I did talk to Steve River, but it was a long time ago and I don't remember what he had told me. So, but I can get some new information on that, on, on what those communities are using, if they're using private or if they're, if they're providing the service and what their fees are to, to get you guys some more information on that.
That'd be great.
I gotta write it down now or I won't have it, so. All right. And then, so this is what a fully automated truck looks like. You know, the driver sits in the cab. They can see the grabber. They pull up. Um, it grabs a can and it automatically dumps it. Um, I haven't, I would imagine if you pay enough, you can get a dual chamber in this as well, where it would separate the two. But this is a single chamber, so you would, with this style, you would still have to make two trips through town, but it would be a single operator. And just quick ballpark numbers from our garbage truck guys is, it's about a half a million dollar truck. So, um, so it's, it's another, it's almost, it's not quite doubling the cost of, of the service. So, or, or the equipment, so. You know, it saves you about eighty thousand dollars a year if you were able to go to one guy and, and not need the other guy anymore. So, um, other than, uh, you know, with that savings, you, you could offset the truck a little bit. But as I've said before, those guys are maintaining all our streetlights. They're, uh, spraying our sidewalks and, um, you know, even if you went down to one on the truck, I think you would probably be disappointed if we didn't have that guy around. The sidewalks would start looking pretty raggedy around town and streetlights would take longer to get fixed. So, I mean, even if you went to this service, I would encourage council to keep that second guy around to keep those other services up to snuff. So I don't know that you can even really look at that as a savings, I guess. So.
Is that savings in regard to just what the cost of having that employee would be?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, with Ben, all the benefits and.
Right, right.
Um, average wages for the city, so. So just a ballpark for can purchase, a thirty-five dollar can's about a hundred and thirty bucks. Sixty-five is a hundred and fifty and a ninety-five gallon can is about a hundred and seventy-five dollars. These are higher end cans. Um, talking to a few people that have used them, they, one thing I did hear over and over and over again is do not buy cheap cans, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Do they, do they all have a universal pickup, so it doesn't matter what kinda truck you get?
Um, it, it does not seem like, they do not all have a uni- they are specific to a grabber. So, um, we would have to be mindful of that when we, when we do purchase cans. So, um, you know, I, I can dig into that if that's the direction we decide to go. And that would also be another reason to kinda start with, you know, a hundred cans too, is to, it'd be a good feel for, uh, which, if, if it's the type of, uh, equipment we wanna, we wanna fully invest in, or if we wanna look for a different, different option. And then for, as far as my estimates on what we would have to have for a monthly base on a can, all I did was take the two hundred, I just assume, assuming that every bag customer went to a can, we would have to be between eight and ten dollars a month for the pickup fee for the can to replace the, the garbage.
Eight, ten dollars extra or total?
Ten dollars extra, so.
Here's what I think. I think your bag customers that you currently have are gonna stay your bag customers. They're not gonna change. And the people, and the people that want the cans, they're gonna start coming out of the woodwork. That's what I think.
Yep.
Cause it's, for me, it's either, I'd rather get the can instead of avoiding me going out to the transfer station two or three times a week, you know, versus, you know, going and buying a bag and, and doing that. So I don't, I think the, the thought is, is the people that are currently buying the bags, they're gonna stay wanting to buy the bags.
Yep, I, yeah, and I, I don't disagree. I just, it's hard to estimate where it needs to be without truly getting six months under our belt to see where revenues are and, and how much fuel we're burning and so on and so forth. So, um, I've, you know, sick, even with the drive by fee, if you had to pay sixteen dollars a month and, uh, have your garbage picked up weekly and your recycling picked up weekly, if it lands there, I, I personally think that's extremely, uh, reasonable. And I've, if, I, I would use that service.
So I guess my question would be then, are we, if we went this route, got purchased the arm to retrofit, would we provide the option of purchasing both the garbage can and a recycling can?
Yep, we can.
Okay, and then what is like the average, like gallon size that most of these cities utilize?
I believe most of them are using the ninety-five gallon. Uh, you wouldn't have a nine, I think a thirty-five gallon would be plenty big for recycling most likely. But, um, the, I, I believe that most, uh, when talking to the can guy, he said most cities utilize the ninety-five.
Okay, and will it be something similar to this that has the rollers on it?
Yep, no matter, they, all the cans have rollers, cause you're, you're not gonna pick up a ninety-five gallon can and roll it up.
Understandable, but I thought I'd ask just in case. You don't wanna make any assumptions here.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
So, um.
So, okay, if you went that route with the cans, let's say someone goes, well, maybe I can get, we'll buy with the thirty-five gallon one and they decide they wanna upgrade. Or is there gonna be, uh, I get it's, it's a hundred and fifty-four, but are you gonna charge them, you know, again, they're already paying the one thirty-two, so they wanna turn that in for a sixty-five gallon one? Are you gonna still charge them another?
Well, are we gonna give them the option to have?
I mean, I think they all have to be uniform.
You just pick the one and go with it. I think what you were saying is that you would purchase a thirty-five gallon for recycling and then the ninety-five for the trash.
Okay.
No choice.
Yeah.
It's gonna be one.
Yeah, I could see that being a nightmare if they're like, I'd like to upgrade to the, yeah.
Yeah, I would prefer to just stick to one can size, but.
This sort of, uh, redefines trash talk for me. And what I've, what I've experienced in the communities I've lived in, is that there is, um, equal size bins, but they're just different color. So the blue one is recycling and the green one is your trash.
And I wonder if the other question to consider is if you do have the same size trash cans and we're concerned about the, the double trips is maybe if we only think that they're gonna utilize thirty-five gallons of trash per week, that maybe recycling's only picked up every two weeks, right? And then the trash cans every week, just a thought.
Yep, and we could, we could play with that, you know, we could, we could spend a month picking up weekly and spend a month pe- picking up every other week and see where our tonnage ends up. And that can kinda tell us what people want and what they're gonna utilize and what they're not gonna.
It seems like I generate more recyclables than I do actually household garbage.
Yeah.
I mean.
Takes up more space.
My containers for recyclable, there's some months where I can't make it a whole month. I gotta go out to transfer and dump them. I got two containers.
There's, there's gonna be a lot to recycling, um, just with education wise, cause you just, you can't throw all plastics in recycling and, um, you know, if you, if you get enough of those wrong plastics in there, it can turn a whole load of recycling into garbage. So we'll have to do some heavy advertising when we do, um, try and get some higher recycling quantities, just to make sure that people understand what we're accepting and what we're not, so.
No, another thing that I thought of too is, you know, maybe, maybe a possibility working with, um, Kerry Acheeta, this might be a good business opportunity for somebody to get going. And, you know, we could privatize the, the trash business and maybe it wouldn't be as expensive for going with a, with a, um, say a nationally recognized trash company, cause I know some of those companies are probably a lot more expensive than if we had just one person doing it for our own community. And maybe there's a, there's, maybe there's something we can do to subsidize some of the stuff that we're doing. So maybe it could be, be a, for whoever's doing the business and a good, a good deal for both the city and the guy doing the business. I don't, just a thought.
No, I, I think that's a real possibility. I've had a conversation with a young man who is perhaps interested in doing that.
Is he perhaps also interested in concrete?
He is not interested at all in concrete. Only if he has to put it in his truck and take it out.
Good question.
No, I have, ironically enough, within the last month.
So like I said, it, this, at the end of the day, this boils down for a service for our community. And I mean, does, does anybody here, I mean, is there anybody here among us that thinks the way that our, our community is doing garbage needs to continue?
No, it's garbage the way we do it.
No, I mean, I'm serious. We heard it from a guy today. We asked him, you know, what are some of the things that our community can work on? And he's, I didn't, I didn't call him up and prompt him because this is near and dear to my heart. But he said that. I'm like, and if we want people to move to our community, the first, first thing that I figured out when I moved here, I'm like, what? I gotta do what? I just wanna get a thing like any other community I've lived in. Get my thing, might roll it down to the street on Tuesday or whatever the day it is. My garbage goes away and it's part of my bill.
Yeah.
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 I mean, so I mean, I, I, I think we need to put our heads together and if we do a hybrid or whatever to get, because I think that once people start to figure out this is an option to get garbage cans, I think the, I think what's gonna happen is, is you might be caught a little short with you and your staff, Brendan, because I think it might happen fast. So fast where you might say, well, what, how am I gonna get all this garbage collection done? You know, so I don't know. That's maybe a thought that, um, is, is that a thought that you are worried about or?
I mean, we can also, you know, at the end of the day, we can limit how many cans we can provide right away too. And until we can scale the service, so. I, you know, I, I guess it hadn't crossed my mind, but it's a possibility, so.
Well, when I asked this question to your predecessor, at that time, it was, I think I asked what pers- percent of the population was using our current garbage service? I can't remember. I thought he said like, and I, he didn't do any research. He just threw a number out and was starting. And I think I asked you maybe a year or two ago, you thought maybe twenty percent and it's four. I mean, it's just, that's astounding to me. It's only four percent.
Yeah, once we actually counted and did some, yeah, it's extremely low.
Yeah.
So when they gave me their counts that month and I calculated four percent, I was like, are you sure you guys counted right?
So our next steps for us to come to consensus to a strategy we'd like to see and then have a public forum?
Well, I think one, you have to decide a consensus, what further do you want for information? Or what do you want to recommend? And then, um, we don't have to have a public forum. We certainly can. But where do you want, you've got the data. Do you need any more data before you?
Well, I, I, I think the community people might wanna know like what, what additional it's gonna cost you. So that's why I was asking Brendan if there's some numbers you could put together for, I mean, what, what does it cost for like an outside service to, to do it versus a city that provides it for their re- residents? What does it cost? Like a couple of different analysis on, you know, both options.
Yeah.
You know, and then if they're, if they're still, I, they're, they're, I know there's one company for sure that'd probably give us a quote, but I, I know that quote's gonna be very high, more than what we wanna pay. And, um, but, you know, with the option of, um, what does it look like if we, if we do a privatized garbage collection system, but some, how do a, a hybrid where we can pay the garbage guy something from the city is, I don't know. Something to compensate him, so it doesn't cost the residents so much either. I don't.
I think too that if we go private, it, it's gonna be the service that's gonna be affected to somewhat. If you want the same service that you're getting in here in town, it's gonna be astronomical cost. These people are gonna come in, dump and go.
Well, I think that, that what you might discover is that you would have to contract with somebody to do recycling and then another business would do the trash.
Right.
Cause I don't think, uh, it, it's automatic that they do both.
I think you're right.
Yeah. There's companies that do both, for sure.
So, I, I guess the other question for us on this, I, I'd like to see a, a cost analysis of privatized with the understanding of what it would be for both trash and recycling, plus those two time cleanups weeks that we have. And then I'd also like to see what a cost analysis would look like for the retrofitted arm to the current truck with the two hundred cans, right? And then still allowing for bag recycling at this point. And just kind of seeing what that cost is. But I'd also like to have a public forum, because I don't think that this should be a decision made in a vacuum since it is very different than anything we've done before and really get, you know, whatever public comment is out there and then go from there. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
No, I think you're right there too. I think.
Private, private collector though won't do cleanup.
Well, and that's what I'm asking is if that's something, and if there is something that happens, what would that cost be if we did it privatized?
If we did it private, I don't think they're gonna want to touch our cleanup weeks, so that's something.
Well, I guess that would be the question, right, that we'd have to ask to see if there was someone who would do that.
I think that's the issue that they ran into before is they didn't want to do the cleanup weeks at all, so then.
That's our, that's back to our services, what it would cost.
Right.
Wasn't there a discussion, Brandon, about possibly having our own crews do the cleanup?
Yeah.
Renting a truck for two weeks, right?
Or keeping the one we have.
Yeah, yeah. Until it dies.
You know, the other issue is, is going with private, private is, is we all know how hard it is to find employees this day and age, so we could find a private firm, but then all of a sudden, they don't have any staff to do it. Then we're in a, then we're in a situation as well. So, I mean, I.
I think our best option, like I said, I think our services will be affected greatly if we go private. I think we should stick to seeing what Brandon could come up with numbers on retrofitting a truck. If, if that's, I think that's your route that you're saying would be the best, is to see, have a, have a, have a community forum and see how many people, like, give ideas. I mean, would they be interested in, would they not be? Give you a little better idea of, you know, do I need to order more cans or how many cans or, you know, see, to see what people want. Everybody I've talked to said they'd love to have a can, and I'm one of them. I, I would do a can. I haul all my stuff now, but I'd rather have a can.
I think even if we went with a private company to come in and do it, I think you're gonna see a major increase in price every, every time you're.
Well, that's what we heard last time, was they would hold that cost for a year or two.
Right.
But then they flat out said, then it's gonna go up significantly.
Yeah.
And there's another step of communication in between getting ahold of them to.
So, you know, and then if you go private and say it's too expensive, and then we're back to square one.
Yeah.
So.
So, are, what are, are you saying what you'd like to have is, Brandon, price out adding an arm to the truck and can purchase?
Yep.
Explore that option, bring numbers to you all and then have a public forum after you review those numbers.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I say.
I already have that quote. The, the dumper was twelve thousand in the cans.
And, to be clear, your preference would be out of all the different options was to go with the, not the, not the.
The dual truck?
Yeah. Was your preference a dual truck?
I mean, I would like to retrofit the current truck to get a feel for our service requirements, needs, I guess. And then, you know, budget a year or two down the road for a dual. I, I think down the road, two years down the road, I think I see us in a dual-chamber truck working well for our city.
Okay.
So, do we need any more information, Brandon, before we ask for a public input? Do you have pricing about what that would cost?
I, I think it would be good for, give me some, give me the rest of this week to call some surrounding communities on what their garbage services cost and what, if they are using a private service, who they are. I know by reading the minutes that basically Waste Management told them, you get somebody else in here and figure it out and then five years later, we'll look at it. So.
Exactly, yes.
So, I, I believe it was kind of like Tri-County Waste or something like that was the only one we received a price from.
Like, had Mayville or Hatton or someplace that they were actually able to give us comparables. Does that sound right?
I think so, yeah. So, but, let me dig into that and I'll send it out to you guys in the next packet. And then we can discuss from there.
On the twenty-fourth?
That should be plenty of time.
And then we can decide if a public hearing and when.
Okay.
Brandon, if we do, let's say that when it happens, the public hearing, do you want to give, have some information on what you can and can't recyclable at that?
Yeah. Jake has a really good informational flyer on that. I can, I can get that from him. I can even, it wouldn't be a bad idea to even post it on Facebook.
And that's Jake Snyder from the county, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Not to be confused with Jake or Chad or Brandon.
Or Brandon.
The other Jake.
All right.
Thank you. You got enough direction, Brandon?
Thanks, Brandon.
Perfect.
Thanks, Brandon.
And you're all good with that consensus?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay, moving on. Mayor's recommendations for council committees. I was looking at moving Joe off Crookston Visitor Bureau and putting Christie there. And then Christie would move off park board and Joe would fill in the park board. And they both seem agreeable to do it.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Joe, wait, do you know when the next visitor's meeting is?
I believe it's the third Thursday.
Third Thursday.
Second Thursday. Second Thursday, is it? It's the second Thursday.
Oh, gosh, guys.
So, it's on Thursday. I don't know, it's one of them two. Seven AM.
Okay, who's the point person for her?
Bob Maxum.
Maxum.
Maxum, okay.
Okay, consensus of the council, okay with that move?
We'll put it on the next agenda because our, our charter requires us to come here first for committee appointments and then bring them on for resolution. So, we will have that on.
Can't have a yea and nay, it's all black and white with our city administrator. Thanks for all that you do.
Wow, I live in the gray, man.
Thanks for all you do, Corky. Um, this is just floating out here with, you know, Wayne was on the development policy and the planning. So, we're looking at options here.
One of the things to consider now is with Morgan being appointed council member, we now have three council members who will be on the EDA. Under the enabling legislation and our ordinances or our enabling resolutions, we can only have two. So, you should discuss. Elaine, what, what are your thoughts?
So, I, I, I thought that maybe since, um, Morgan has her marketing background, I think she would be a better fit on, on, on cheetah.
Oh, that's, you owe a quarter now.
That's a, yeah, you owe.
EDA.
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 And you owe a quarter.
To everybody here.
That's a quarter.
EDA.
EDA, Economic Development Authority.
And then, you know, then I could, I could possibly take, you know, like the Planning Commission and Development Policy or.
Yep.
And Tim has some expertise in the housing component of that.
Yeah, Tim, Tim has, has a passion on the housing side. I think he does a good job on that side. So, that's why I, I'd be willing to bow out of the EDA side of the.
So, you're willing to take over Development Policy and Review and Planning?
Yep.
And I know the Development Policy and Review, I'm not sure, they don't meet often. Planning is.
As needed.
As needed, kind of.
You can kind of think about once a month, but probably not count on that.
Great. I was on it once, before, shortly, yep.
Yeah. Is everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
So, those will all be on the next council meeting for the actual appointments.
Okay.
And then, come December, if there's a certain committee, council wants to be on, you know, let me know. We can do some juggling. If you want to get off this one and go to this one. You know, just because you're here for your term doesn't mean you gotta sit on the same committee or board for four years, so.
And we'll do it in December, so we can roll right away in January.
December.
So, let the mayor know if you have a particular interest, let's try to get that to him before the December. So, we can have our ways and means and get her done.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Any others?
All good with that one then?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, cannabis discussion, that would be Corky's gig.
Right, and this is just general information tonight, not asking you to do anything, but just to hear this out and to start thinking about it. As you know, our legislature has recently passed cannabis legislation. The copy that I got is about a hundred and fifty pages long. I've been through it. It does make significant changes. One of the changes is that there will be a committee appointed of approximately fifty people to issue the criteria for licensure, the criteria, and give us model ordinances that we can consider. So, what I am asking you to start thinking about is, one, we will have a public hearing on the twenty-fourth of July where we will solicit input from any one of our citizens who wants to come and talk about this. Legislation that's passed, their beliefs, how we should be handling this. In addition, we as a city have some ability to draft ordinances about distances from schools, churches, those kind of things. Zone where the, the enhanced product or the different product may be sold. So, we want to start thinking about that. We want to rely on what this committee will set forth. We don't have to do what they suggest, but they will give us guidance. The League of Minnesota Cities will give us guidance. So, one of the things that we will be talking about after the public input is consider what East Grand Forks has done. East Grand Forks has issued a moratorium on when it will act on the new enhanced, I'll call it cannabis legislation. One of the things we'll want to consider next time is a resolution for what do we want to enact in our ordinance? One of the things to consider is do we want to continue with the abilities that were allowed under the twenty-twenty-two legislation? I see John's here, that's something you're gonna want to consider. East Grand Forks, as I understand it, have a copy of their ordinance, allowed the continuation of that which was allowed in the twenty-twenty-two. Basically, the beverages and the edibles. They allow that to continue as it was. You'll want to consider that. You'll want to consider who you want to continue to investigate this, who you want to have continue to work that. You know, the city attorney, myself, do the research for what would be appropriate. Now, mostly it has said that by January one of twenty-twenty-five, we are supposedly to have the guidance, the model ordinances, the committee's guidelines on how we want to approach the new and enhanced, I'll call it cannabis legislation. Tonight is just to make you aware and have you direct me as to what you want me as the administrator to do in terms of bringing myself and to your benefit up to date on the actions of this committee.
So, so, the, the two-year moratorium that East Grand Forks does, that just, I mean, what, what does that do exactly? I mean, you, you, so, to my understanding of what you just said, you have to get a license from the state to sell it, right?
Yes.
So, but they, they don't even have a community get, committee, so how are they even going to get a license, right?
My understanding is that there have been appointed six members of the fifty-member committee, so they're not really rolling. No licenses will be issued. But what the moratorium does, if it were to be passed by you all, and similar to East Grand Forks, is we're gonna continue to investigate, we're gonna continue to seek out model ordinances, but we're not going to allow anything to be done in this community other than what's being done presently.
But, why, why do we need to have the moratorium if they can't even get a license?
Well, it gives us time to get our, basically ducks in a row.
To figure out what ordinances we may want to enact about distances from schools, distances from churches, those kind of things, as well as what we're gonna do in terms of potentially having another tax. Where will zone these facilities that will be selling? Or whether we want a municipal dispensary, so, that's permissible.
Or do we enact a city tax?
Well, yeah, but I mean.
So, there is a city tax, that's part of the.
Well, the part of the overall tax is split up.
There is, but.
Yeah, twelve to eight percent.
So, it just gives us the time to do that without rushing into anything.
I, I, I know, but it, like we talked about before, just, just put the tax on, I mean, we could always change it. I mean, put the, put the tax on, follow the same rules as what a liquor store would, would follow. That doesn't take too long. I mean, we don't need two years.
No, it just allows up to two years. Doesn't say it has to be. Doesn't say it has to be.
And you don't have to vote for the moratorium either.
I think the other thing is, is, is it, is it necessary need to have a moratorium if they can't get the licensure at this point anyways? Isn't that in itself do that same thing?
It's kind of an embedded moratorium in itself.
Yeah.
The reason you would do that, if you chose to, is that we don't know when these licenses are gonna come out. You, you would want to be proactive in thinking about where you want to be when they come out.
But is that something that we would be doing now as being proactive and decide, having those conversations now?
Well, I wonder if we shouldn't also, you know, engage, you know, people like John who are already on the front lines of doing their work.
I would like to hear from John, what's his thoughts.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, why don't you?
I mean, you're, you're in the game. We can put a moratorium and we can take it off too. Like, I mean, it's not like we can't take it away as well. Like, we can put it on and then once we figure it out, we can take it off immediately.
That's the whole idea, is you give yourself some.
Well, first of all, thanks for the opportunity to let us be part of this. My joke is that if I had put as much work into university as I've done in learning about this hemp business and now this cannabis business, I would be on my second doctorate already. So, Casey, my business partner, and Crookston resident also for life, you know, we put a lot of time and work in on this. Let me do a couple of things maybe to outline and then we can have a discussion. First of all, when you're talking about January of twenty-five, do remember seeds are gonna be legal on August first. From our point of view, that's an agricultural kind of a thing. The seeds have to be Minnesota labeled. This is already law, that's functioning. We, we'll have a license for that and we'll be selling them. I would ask you in all these things that you're considering to be gentle. And let me tell you the, the biggest reason why. You want to put a city tax on and make some money on the future cannabis that might be sold. But remember, our biggest competition is four different colored trucks. Brown for UPS, white for FedEx, white for the United States Post Office and yellow for DHL. They are bringing a ton of this stuff into your city every day. That doesn't get taxed, doesn't get controlled. The box gets thrown up on a porch where it can sit all day long until mom or dad or whoever ordered it comes home with the kids walking by from school and any other people that, that might be available. Where, when you have it in a brick and mortar store that you have control over, as you do with the liquor stores and us, you know, nobody gets in our store without being twenty-one. We actually evaluate them also, although, for instance, the hours you might be considering, we joke about it a little bit. We're open from noon to six. We really could close at. We really could close at five, because most of our customers are home in bed sleeping by eight-thirty. So, you know, it's not a, it's not a, oh, it's midnight, I want to go out and get something to get high, that's just not our customer base. Now, that's gonna change some with cannabis, but it, it's a real smart, educated community out there of users who've been doing this for a long, long time. They're just happy that it's coming legal. So, the first thing to consider is seeds, and how you want to deal with that. We hope that you will just let that flow, because we feel it's an agricultural product. Then, we have to be licensed by the state by the, in October, beginning or end? By the end of October, we have to have a state license to have our low-level cannabis store. So, we will be licensed by the state of Minnesota long before this.
And when you say low level, what do you mean?
What, what we're selling now is what we consider low level. Anything that's from the hemp plant, it's five milligrams per serving, drinks, edibles, mints, all of the kind of things that you can find in our store. For instance, we don't have any vape of any kind, THC vapes are illegal in Minnesota unless you buy them at the dispensary, with a dispensary license. That will never happen in our store, that will happen in whatever the license for the new store might be. So, so, there's things coming up before this January of two thousand twenty-five. But that's, that's, that's our biggest thing, is that, we're working on this every day. One of the first gentlemen that was picked to be on this committee of fifty or so is our main supplier. He's been in the business for a lot of years, he's a really good guy. And, and of course, our law firm in Minneapolis, there's two law firms now that have gone into really specializing in cannabis, and we are associated with one of them. So, open for just, any questions that you might have, but that's kind of our, our point of view, is that, thank you for letting us be included.
Where does the supply come from?
That we sell now?
No, like, from the, for the cannabis, and once, once it starts.
Well, that's, that's, that's another gray area, because somebody's gonna have to get a license, then get some seeds, which the general population will have access to long before that. Then they're gonna have to start planting and start growing.
But you have to buy from a licensed.
It's a gray area as to whether we can bring in from Colorado or California and resell it, we don't know the answer to that yet.
One of the problems, not a problem, is that probably they could get them from Colorado to here, but the federal government is in between, and then you're transporting.
From state lines.
Schedule one across state lines to get them even here. So, that's more than gray, that's problematic.
Yeah, exactly.
So, for example, if you sell seeds, and just say to anybody that comes in your store, and they go grow it somewhere.
Right.
Can they bring it back to you and sell it to you for you to grow?
Not legally, they can give, they can, they can have eight plants, of which only four can be mature at one time. It has to be in a guarded place, you can't, if you have a three-sided apartment house, you can't, you know, put it where everybody can look out the window. And they can have up to then two pounds, over time, they can accumulate two pounds in their home, but they can only be carrying out two ounces.
And two pounds is a lot.
It's a lot, that's really, really.
And eight pounds from ten.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think five was.
Listen, I'm not, I'm not saying how stupid this law is, I'm just trying to say, they, they, they made the law, so, they, and just like before, they, I don't know why they make this law, then expect the cities and to figure this stuff out, so I'm like, what? It's not our job, I mean, yeah, we'll, we'll do it, but I don't think we need to stick that much time into it, let's figure out, I mean, pick, pick a number, how far can alcohol be sold from schools and stuff like that? Do something similar, I mean, we don't need two years to figure it out. You know, if we got a business, part of me says, if we got a business that wants to come in town, and we can make some tax money off of it, I mean, that's.
Well, they can't come down until they get a license.
Right, well, right, but that's, that's a built-in moratorium in my mind.
I mean, I feel more, I feel comfortable with like, doing things that are similar to what it would be for alcohol, you know, and why don't we just?
Just to start.
Yeah.
You know, a starting stepping stone, just to start, and then it can change, it can change from there, but the, you know, so, so, right now, if, if, if anybody, there's right now, and, and, once the seeds become available, there's not a moratorium that we can make that for anybody that can grow it inside the city of Crookston right now, on their own, right? But, just because we put a moratorium on it, can somebody get seeds and grow it within the city limits of Crookston without?
I don't know how they'll get seeds, but.
Well, if they buy it from somewhere else, they can grow it.
May I address that?
Yeah.
Seeds that can become smokeable, high percentage marijuana, are not marijuana seeds, they're completely legal. There's no THC in them, that's why they can be put through the mail.
Oh.
So, so, when they're buying them, they're not buying anything that's illegal.
But before, if you grew them, you would, there, you'd be subject to law enforcement coming to you.
Exactly, but starting August first.
But August first, somebody can plant those seeds and, and have whatever the specific limits are, and it's legal.
Yep.
No matter what we do with our moratorium or not.
Is that correct, Darren?
That's, that's right, and that's why I'm asking, I, you know, to consider, wouldn't you rather have control of Rick and Mortar Store than the internet and mail order and everything like that?
So, what's gonna happen is, is people that want it are either gonna grow it themselves, or they're gonna get it.
Somewhere else.
Somewhere else, and then, we got a business in town that, you know, like I said, I think we should figure out a tax right away, and get it go, and get the tax going.
What is your understanding about giving away?
So, they're just like, keep doing what they're doing right now?
About, I'm sorry?
Giving away without remuneration.
You can, you can give to anybody that's twenty-one.
And over.
All you grow, two ounces at a time, and that's where I think you kick in.
And I was gonna say, Darren would like to hear from you as well.
If they're driving around. Yeah, yeah.
No, and I, what was your question exactly, again?
Well, the question is, is anybody, like, after August first?
Yeah.
Anybody has a garden?
Yeah.
And plant this in their garden, and as long as they stay under the, correct me if I'm wrong, under the legal limits of what they're supposed to have at any given time, how many plants, four?
Four mature. Eight, eight total.
Four mature, and, yep.
So, even if we put this moratorium on, that doesn't prevent those folks from growing it in their own garden right here in Crookston.
Right, and it doesn't prevent them from growing or distributing anywhere, that's, that's the problem. So, you know, my understanding also, and enforcement piece of this, I think is gonna be very, very difficult, but, and this is all new legislation, and we're still trying to figure it out, my also understanding is, unless you purchase it from a dispensary, it's illegal to possess as it is currently. So, again, those dispensaries aren't even be licensed or available for sale till January twenty-five. And, you know, same as we talked about the edibles, and, and it is working out fine, and, and John runs a really good tight ship over there, but, same with this position, there's not a regulatory committee to oversee or oversight any policy, enforcement, et cetera. Your moratorium would also include cultivation, growing, distributing, et cetera, of that THC. So, again, you know, last time, we already had a business in place, and I know you made your decision on, we didn't want to shut anybody down, and I think, now we're trying to get ahead of it, being proactive for that piece, and, and as you're seeing, there's still, even to this day, even, you know, as John's explaining, you know, selling that seed, distributing that seed, there, there's, he doesn't even know the answer to that, right? And he's got two double doctorates, as he explained, on it, right? So, I would wish, again, you take our advice, as, as your, you know, chief of police and everything else, to give us some time. It's coming, the same as the edibles did, but by not putting that moratorium in place, exactly what you said could happen. I could plant it out back behind my, in my garden next to a church or school, there's no regulatory oversight on that.
I thought it had to be in a place that was.
We don't know that, though, right? There's nothing there, they don't even have a committee.
It can't be easily seen, it's gotta be.
Sure.
Yeah.
But, I put in the moratorium on the edibles, had we done that, you wouldn't know if he was running a tight ship, I mean, obviously, he's running.
You, you don't want my personal opinion on that, that's old news, you know, you, you know, that's old news, you didn't take my advice. You guys did what you wanted on that, that's old news, I don't want to go down that road. I would hope you would take our consideration and, and some of our advice and apply on this, I mean, it's in the public's best interest, I know John disagrees with me on that.
What's the threat to the public by having this, like, not having a moratorium or not?
Threat to the public?
What's the?
Well, we can go into that, I mean, we're already seeing three out of five controlled some DWI, it's only gonna increase. This is the problem overall. I'm not gonna get my personal opinion on that, but it's gonna be a problem for our community, I'll just say that. I mean, enforcement's gonna be almost impossible, right?
Darren, I, I don't disagree with you. I, I, I don't.
That just doesn't seem any way of the direction that you want to take any of advice from us, though, on that.
Whether the, we do the moratorium or not, is not gonna, is not gonna help with, with enforcement. To, I mean, enforcement's gonna be the same two years versus, I mean, you're still gonna have the same type of issues, whether we put the moratorium on or not, I mean.
But it gives us that opportunity, it gives us that opportunity to limit that.
It's our belief that no legislation, no local laws, no county laws, can stop an individual person from planting these eight seeds, as long as they meet the other requirements that are in the Minnesota law.
But the deal is, is what?
It's for up to.
Having the seeds, I mean, it's one thing to have them, but you gotta know, actually, it ain't like throwing a tomato plant in the ground and hoping to get tomatoes, you gotta know what you're doing growing pot. I mean.
There's some experience?
I mean, back in the day.
It grows in the ditches, man.
Back in the day, we tried to, tried to grow marijuana, and there was homegrown, it was called, it was nothing but ditch weed. You'd get an headache off it before you even got a buzz. So, what I'm saying is, anybody in Crookston can have seeds and throw them in their garden or a controlled environment to try to grow them, but if you don't know what you're doing with them, they're gonna have ditch weed.
Yeah.
Granted, but I mean.
I think the other big thing that came out of the League of Minnesota Cities conversation, and really the biggest struggle for cities, is gonna be, as Darren mentioned, the enforcement of the, the, under the influence situations, because it's not something that you could utilize a breathalyzer.
Right.
Or even a blood alcohol, I mean, it's not gonna be something like that, right?
It's not gonna be easily readily available, yep.
Right, and it's not gonna be easy for them to significantly show cause of, under the influence, right? That's gonna hold up in court, and I think that's where, you know, Minnesota's really struggling right now in talking about legislation and, and the utilization of these substances with, and driving, right?
Right, I mean, we, we spent big dollars already, you know, training officers as drug recognition experts, we've sent them to Boston and different states to learn that, to try to get ahead of this, and it, it's an uphill battle, and, you know, I guess I would just, you know, and I know we're not making any decisions, but for consideration, I mean, that uphill battle, there's, there's no answers to our questions on that yet. And I would hope you would take our advice and just give us that minute to fight this uphill battle, get our, our regulatory, uh, local committee into place, our laws, our ordinance, everything, and mirror what League of Minnesota Cities and the state and everything else, though. But they, they made this legal August first, right, but you can't even open a dispensary for a year and a half, and the laws and rules in between, they don't have the committee established, I mean, it's such a gray area, it just kind of seals the deal for us to follow suit and figure that out, so that people can't kind of come behind you, if you want to say, and, and do something that, you know, we, we, you know what I mean? With, with no oversight on that.
Can the county put on a moratorium?
There it has.
Hundred percent, they sure can, mhm.
Hey, what?
They already did.
The Polk County put on a two-year.
Correct.
Well, they put out initially, when the edibles and drinks came out, that's when they started their moratorium.
That is.
That does not include this local.
No.
But they did one on the, the edible THC, the hemp, the five milligrams.
Which I was assuming the same will go through for this then.
And all we wanted to do tonight was to introduce you to this discussion.
So, so, correct me if I'm wrong, then, right now, currently, East Grand Forks has a two-year moratorium?
Up to, two years.
Up to two years, and then Polk County has up to.
They have a moratorium on what my store is over here right now.
Only on the hemp right now.
They don't, they have an address, I don't believe, Gary.
Delaine, they do not have a moratorium on this.
Do you not have jurisdiction over these cities who have the government?
Right, but what we're asking, though, is that you have the moratorium initially on the first part of the edibles and drinks, you have not decided as a county about this new legislation. That is why the clarification was, thank you.
Darren, what is your timeline, what would, what would your timeline be like that you need?
On the moratorium?
Yeah.
You know, that, I think that's why we're saying up to two years, because, again, you know, dispensaries aren't even gonna be licensed or available till January twenty-five. So, I mean, if something happens sooner, they get the committee formed, and, and, you know, regulation comes out faster than we could.
You can remove it.
Remove it, exactly, but it just gives us that opportunity.
Can I just clarify something?
I mean, because there's, even, even under the edibles with, with John and that, I mean, again, there's not a, not a lot of oversight ordinance, et cetera, and we're finding out more and more different businesses that are selling them, right? Because we don't have licensing in place to come to city, we're asking them to come tell us, hey, tell us you're selling it, but we don't have any ordinance or anything in place to regulate that. I'm finding these throughout city as I'm going to different businesses, different places, so.
So, yeah.
Can I ask?
You just hear it one second. So, you know, there's a place in Grand Forks that's selling what we sell legally at five times the dose that we are allowed.
Which is not legal, is that what you're saying?
No, it is, it is, you can argue that it's legal, because it still matches all the federal guidelines from two thousand eighteen.
And is this in, is it in Grand Forks or East Grand Forks?
In Grand Forks.
Okay, so North Dakota?
In North Dakota, and Fargo, but we're, we know more about our local area.
Can I just clarify with you, when you guys talked about that low-level licensing that is, do you, by the end of October? Can you, can you elaborate on that part?
I think it's the current business they have, right? You're gonna have to have a license for their current business.
Right.
Currently, right now, you don't have to have a license or anything through the state.
A state license.
You have a state license for their current business.
For low level?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
That, that's where that goes on to that point, exactly, like you said.
So, then, I guess, my question to you then, is then, as you're seeing other stores and what have you, that will be something that you guys will be enforcing in October?
At that point, they would be required to have that. Enforcement, I don't know what that looks like yet. I mean, I'm sure if we have local ordinances and things in play, we could enforce that, and I would hope that the state would have some kind of guidance on, as far as that goes, but.
But that's gonna be a while.
Yep.
So, the question is, I mean, since he opened his business, what have we done to set up ordinance since he started?
We've been waiting for this to be acted on.
That's the thing, we should have been working on them ordinances already.
So, as, as you know, they came out within just a few months of each other, right? And we haven't.
We, we, we wanted to put a, a two-year moratorium on his current business that he has, but as a city, we haven't done anything in, in the matter of ordinance on his current business, we haven't set up a tax structure on it, we haven't set up any guidelines on how far away from schools or churches or different things like that, we haven't done anything, so that's, that's on us.
That's on us, in one sense, yes. When we talk to the league or seeking advice.
There is none.
Listen, why don't, why do we have to let other communities set up ordinance that we have to follow?
We're not, we're.
Understand that, why can't we set up an ordinance, and then change it as they come before more readily available?
Because that's a, okay, one, and that's an explanation, you'll be basically employing the city attorney full-time to do that.
Yep.
Okay, okay, that's one. Two, the process of getting an ordinance written, passed, published, enacted, is a lengthy process, okay? So, probably those are the reasons, and because he's been, he's been compliant, as I understand it, basically with law enforcement, is that correct, Darren?
Yeah, we've had, we have had concerns with John.
And clearly not close to schools or churches or whatever.
There, there's still no guidance on that either, Delaine, there, there really isn't, I mean.
I, I, I know, see, listen, again, the state passed a crappy law, okay, I, I, I get it. But now, they're, they're leaving it up to us cities to, to figure out what we should do, so I don't know why we, as the cities, can't just get it done. I mean, we're, we're an independent city from anybody else, we don't have to wait for other communities, let's do what's best for our own community.
Sure.
And that's the action piece next meeting.
Right.
So, I guess, why aren't we, like Adeline had said beforehand, why aren't we just utilizing what we already have in place for alcohol, and creating similar ordinances for?
We don't know, okay, we don't know what the state's gonna require for licensing, we have no idea, John has no idea what they're gonna require.
But, again, we start.
We kind of know what that's gonna be.
We start, but not for sure, I mean, they've given us general guidelines of fees, and how much it's gonna cost, if you're gonna be.
Fees are set.
Yep, they've done that.
That's the kind of, that's kind of information that we need.
Well, that'd be to get your state license.
But I, I really just ask you, while you're considering adding a tax, we already collect seventeen point one-two-five percent tax, between the sales tax and the new state tax that went in effect.
None, none of which comes back to the city, though, right?
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just saying, the more that it costs at my store, the higher the chance that somebody's gonna order it on the internet, or on the.
That's business competition.
I'm sorry that you're taxed up, but, I mean, if we're gonna do this in our city, we're gonna tax you, that's my thought, I, I can't speak for everybody, that's, that's where I want to get it to, and I, yeah, I, I know, it's. that's, that's where I want to get it to, and I, I know, it's the cost of doing business, but that's where I'm, that's where I'm getting at, I mean, I'm not, if I, if I pass this through, I, I, I want to, I want to get some kickback for the community of why we're doing this, not just to, not just to, you know, let...
Not just taxing for the sake of taxing.
Right, right, so, I mean, I, I, I get that you're being taxed federally, or, or state, by the state or whatever, but I want some, I want some city tax in the mix as well, and then, then on top of that, I would like, like you have to get a liquor license, a license on top of that as well, so, I mean...
Well, I think that's part of the licensing, what they're talking about.
And that's what I'm saying, we don't know those things.
But still, so, I mean, I, I think we could get a committee together within the city limits of Crookston, figure this out, get it drafted, and, 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 and that's our starting block, and that's...
That's what the moratorium gives you, is the time to do that.
Yeah, but, so, I, and I get that, so, but, the, the moratorium we put on before, if we would have put it on before at the beginning when he came before, we still haven't done nothing with that, so, I mean...
I wouldn't say we've done nothing, we, I mean, we have started things, but do we have anything that's been passed, no, we don't, but, you know...
So, something started to be drafted?
Corky and I haven't drafted anything, we don't have a, an ordinance on, on paper, no.
What are we talking about?
For the...
Yeah.
What we have.
No, we've met, we've talked, but we don't have anything to bring before you, and quite frankly, because it hasn't been an issue.
Right.
And again, these are, these are the discussions that you'll have next time, this was just to introduce it.
Sure.
Maybe we'll meet till midnight next time, who knows, but just to get you aware that there's things coming, and I'm glad...
Can I ask, is there a city tax on alcohol or tobacco right now?
Nope.
Nope.
I'm just, I'm just asking, because if we're going to choose one substance to tax versus another, I think that you need to be...
I thought there might have been, but I guess...
Not a local tax.
I, I would think that if you're going to, I don't think you should...
Right.
And again, next time.
Right.
There are quite a bit of issues.
I think we just take a breath, and let's just...
We'll have our public hearing on the 24th, inputs from whoever, I'm sure John will be here, Parton will be here, others may be here.
Please chief, I'm here.
Well, I think, I think the biggest part, and I think is most important, is that, that everybody who has a stake in this, or stakeholders for that matter, should be at the table in this discussion, including John, including Darren, and I think it needs to be a larger discussion than just...
An interesting aside, we bought a cigarette license in September, October, because we have some cigarettes that are made in Canada that have no fillers or anything, they're just pure cigarettes, we have not yet sold enough to pay for our license.
They're not coming to your store for cigarettes.